I call to order the West Jordan City Council Meeting for February 28, 2018. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Logan Mitchell from Troop 18. Logan, come on up.
Please stand with me in repeating the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may now be seated.
We have two presentations this evening. And we'll first start with a recognition of some firefighters and turn the time over to Chief Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. If you wouldn't mind coming in front of the guys. Just face the crowd there, gentlemen. Okay, again, thank you, Mayor, and the Council for the opportunity to recognize two of our own tonight. First, we have Captain Chris Maxville and firefighter paramedic Travis Ball. Recently, these two individuals joined a small group of professionals who have successfully completed the National Fire Academy's Managing Officers Program. The Managing Officers Program's multi-year curriculum builds on foundational management and technical competencies required in our officers. It also connects up-and-coming emergency services leaders to professional skills in management, risk reduction, and adaptive leadership. Those selected to the program spend a total of four weeks attending classes at the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and are also required to find and attend prerequissen classes throughout Utah and surrounding states. In total, the program takes over two years to complete and is a huge sacrifice for the families of those that attend. Both Travis and Chris were selected to participate in the charter presentation of this program. With the completion of their capstone projects last fall, are now some of the first in the country to graduate to the level of designated managing officers. We currently have six more of our best firefighters accepted into this program. We are very proud and excited to watch them learn and grow into even more effective servants of this community. So Chris and Travis. Travis. Christopher.
Sir.
Congratulations on your hard work and dedication not only to improving yourselves, but also improving the future of the West Jordan Fire Department. Thank you.
I guess you have some new attorneys you'd like to...
I'm going to ask Mr. Dodd to introduce them as the attorney representing the city attorney's office.
We have honored to have two new attorneys in our office. We have Mr. David Quahley, who started, I believe, about 10 days ago, and Jared Tingey, who started a week before him, who have both come to our office, and just like to have them just come up and introduce themselves.
We promise not to start the three-minute timer for you.
My name is Jared Tingey, and over the last four years, I've been out in Duchenne County working for their attorney's office. And so it's, I grew up in Kaysville, so it's good to be back and out on the Wasatch Front and good to be working. Thank you.
Good to have you here.
I'm Dave Quahley. Most recently, I was with Salt Lake County DA's office and have worked with the Attorney General's office as well. I'm native to Salt Lake County area. Look forward to getting back to working with municipal governments. It's great work, and I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you here. Thank you, Logan. We'll now move to communications and start with our city manager.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, I'm pleased to announce and tell you that Mike Rose Returning the Favor will air March 6 on Facebook. This show will be posted at 10:00 PM on March 5. The official release date is the following day on March 6, but this is the special acknowledgement of Alton Thacker, one of our own, and his workshop helpers, who will be watching and premiering in the community room, March 6 at 11:00 AM. So if you'd like to join us and watch that show with Alton and his friends, that'd be great. Each episode is about 25 minutes long. We will try to arrange for permission to stream it later, but it's going to be a pretty neat highlight of West Jordan. So if you can tune in and see it at that time, it'll be a lot of fun to, you'll see a lot of the locals across the other side of the room there, too. There's some other things that will be posted shortly here on the website. I'd like to give just some advance notice. We have an Easter egg hunt scheduled for Saturday, March 31 at 9:00 AM at the soccer complex. We also are registering now for Comcast Care Days, which is going to be April 21st from 8:00 AM to noon, with organizations starting place at Ronwood Park. And of course, they'll spread out all over the city and help out wherever we can. We're going to coordinate, and Kim was here a minute ago, but we're coordinating with the, some high school football teams, so they get some recognition, some drill teams. And if you need a bin, you need to visit with us quickly, so we can get that into your neighborhood and then get it filled up. Finally, there is a citizen satisfaction survey that's online and will be shared via email and with Facebook. If you don't have access to a computer and would like a hard copy, call 801-569-5163 and we will get you a hard copy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Paul?
Nothing today, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Duncan?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move over here and start with Scott.
Mayor, Council, just to call your attention to the sheets that should be next to all of your monitors. It's what it is. It's a zoning distribution list. The last update, it looks like, was January 2015, so it's about time that we got you some updated numbers. What it does is it shows all of the city zoning, how many acres they occupy within West Jordan, the percentage that they take up in West Jordan, and additional information. So if you have any questions, you can contact me offline, but we're glad that we can provide some updated information for you. Thank you.
Brian?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, David?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
You, Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, just a reminder to everybody that's here. UDOT is planning to close the 90th and Bangator intersection tonight, beginning at 8:00 PM and running until about 6:00 AM tomorrow morning to place more bridge beams. So just plan accordingly. If you're heading west along 90th sometime after 8:00 PM, before 6:00 AM tomorrow morning, expect the 90th and Bangator intersection to be closed.
Justin, I believe it's closed eastbound. Westbound will stay open. Is that correct?
I believe it's both directions. According to UDOT's press release, it's both directions.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Peterson?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Chief Diamond?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll move to council members and start with Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things. I've had a lot of fun the last couple of weeks interacting frequently with our state delegation, and it's been wonderful to be in contact with them. They're doing a lot of good work for us up on the Hill. It's been, it's been very eye-opening to kind of watch the process this week. And also, I will be holding a, or the city will be holding a town hall for residents of the Maples area, Maples and the surrounding areas regarding a park. There's a future park on the Future Land Use map, and we're finally making some progress down that road a little bit. We want to talk to the neighborhood. So stay tuned on a date and time. That should be coming shortly. But anybody who lives on the extreme west side, that will be coming down the road shortly, within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I just want to thank Kim Wells for taking Chad and myself on a tour of different buildings in our city and thank the staff members that gave up their time to help us get a better in-depth look at our facilities and the things that are going on there. So thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to repeat what Kayleen Whitelock said. We had a great opportunity to tour both the Justice Center and the Public Works Building, two buildings that, as a citizen of West Jordan, I've lived here for 18-plus years, and I've never had a chance to tour either of those. And both the chief of police and his staff gave us a good tour of what they do over there, and it's great to see what they do for us and the opportunities that they have in that building to help and protect our city. And also, our new, our Public Works Building, if most of you don't know, we are getting a new Public Works Building, so we got a tour of the old one, which is very dilapidated at this time. It's still in good use right now. We actually went on probably one of the snowiest days of the year to go out there and see that. So it's great to see what our city does and what the staff does to keep our city moving during snowstorms and also all the other big vehicles that go out there and keep things working with our sewer or with our water, et cetera. So I mean, I'm looking forward to see the new Public Works Building when it's finished, and I wanted to give our staff a good round of applause for all the hard work they do for our citizens. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to welcome all the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts who are joining with us today. I appreciate very much your service and the values that Boy Scouts teaches to our young men.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just had one thing that I wanted to mention, that on Monday night of this week, I had the opportunity to go to Joel P. Jensen Middle School. They asked me to come over and read to students, and I just had a really fun evening that night. They had a lot of activities going on there, and it was just a fun activity to go to and be a part of. Since that's all of our communications here, I'm going to open this up to citizen comments. There'll be two opportunities to speak tonight. We do have a public hearing, so if you're here to speak on the public hearing, that might be the more appropriate time to speak. But at this time, I'd like to open it up to citizen comments, and we'll start with those that have signed up. And I have Jay Thomas, so we'll start with Jay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here representing the West Jordan Exchange Club, and I sent you an email last week or maybe the week before inviting you to participate in our ACE Awards. So I'm just here formally and in person to re-invite you guys to attend that. A little bit about our ACE Awards. It's, they take some kids from all the different high schools in West Jordan, and we concentrate on the youth in West Jordan. They have to go and get a recommendation from their counselor, and then they have to write an essay, and they submit that essay to the Exchange Club, and then we pick those individuals out of that group, and we give them a scholarship, which they can use after they graduate. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in a college. They can do a trade school or some sort of further education. And this kind of concentrates on some of the disadvantaged youth in our community, so it kind of gives them kind of a step forward on that. So we're kind of really excited about that. So we invite you to help honor those students. If you're able to, it's on Thursday, March 15 at 7:30 AM at Jordan Valley Hospital on the third floor in classrooms one and two. And if you need any further information, please give me a call or contact me, and we'll get you that more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we have those that are in the audience that would like to come and speak to council, you have three minutes in which to do so. And please state your name and contact information. So we'll open it up to anybody in the audience that would like to come and speak.
Mayor, Council, Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South. I'd just like to offer my gratitude to our firefighters. Our public service, when it comes to these gentlemen, put their lives on their lines. And so to me, this is a great opportunity to show the sacrifices they go through, not only for the benefit of themselves, but also for this community. And I hope we remember that when it comes time for budgets and things like that, that we pay an awful lot of money for an awful lot of things that, in my mind, don't directly affect my life. These people do directly affect my life, and so I'm proud of them as a citizen. Another thing that I'd like to address is the installation of bike lanes along 13th West. I don't understand how we can pick them, one of the most narrowest, busiest streets that we have in West Jordan, and all of a sudden, that's a place where we're going to put bike lanes. You know what? Widen the lane first. Make it so that we can get the cars back through there without having to run over bicycles. You know, I just, I'm really getting tired of sacrificing transportation dollars that are coming out of my gas money to maintain our roads, to put something in that gets used very little in comparison. First priority of 13th West is to make sure that it's wide enough and to be able to handle all the apartments that are being put along there. And I'm not sure exactly what this $115,000 is going to go to, but you know, that money can be a lot better spent for this community. And the other thing I just would like to acknowledge is also on your business item with the South Valley reclamation. I think it is a good idea to get that kicked off and underway since the dollars are, or the interest rates are low. One thing I will caution, after working 13 years in this business, make sure you put enough money in there for expansion, because if, if, if we're going to put those dollars aside right now and get ready for it, then it should be used right now. But if you're going to put those monies aside right now and use it two years from now, there's going to be a cost exhalation of that project. I guarantee it. And I hope you've got that money and that bond to cover that, because when you guys don't do that, it's the small contractors that take it in the shorts. I've been on the receiving end of that. The city looks at us and goes, you know what? That's all the money we got, and it's four years down the road before final completion. The people that take in the shorts are the small contractors, the third, the third-tier contractors. The general contractor doesn't take it. He passes all that down to the bottom guys. So if you're going to do it this way, I hope you plan accordingly. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close citizen comments and move to consent items. Are there any consent items that wish to be called? Councilmember McConaughey?
B is in Bravo.
Councilmember Whitelock?
E, please.
I'm sorry?
E, elephant.
Councilmember Burton?
D, I'm sorry, C as in cat.
So would like, someone like to make a motion on the remaining? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve consent items A, D, F, and G.
Second? We have a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Okay, let's start with the consent item B. Approve Resolution 18-30 amending the annual meeting schedule for two city council meetings previously scheduled, April 25, 2018, and September 12, 2018. And Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. While we're adjusting the schedule, I would suggest that we might want to consider November and December meetings as well. With November, I would suggest we move our meeting from November 28 to November 7. So we're meeting the first and second Wednesday rather than the third and fourth, or excuse me, rather than the first and third. With that third one, with the, with the break in there for the holiday, plus we're going to be meeting the subsequent week anyway, people would have to have stuff ready basically before Thanksgiving break, so it seems to make more sense to just do the first and the second week. And then in December, with everything else going on, trying to meet the week right before the holidays, I would suggest we move our meeting from December 19th, move it forward one week, so we would meet on December 5 and December 12. So for consistency, the first and second Wednesday of both November and December.
What were the dates in November again?
Right now, we're scheduled for the 14th and the 28th. I would suggest we change it to November 7 and 14th.
And then December is currently the 5th and the 19th.
Which would become the 5th and the 12th. So if there's no objection, I'm ready to make a motion.
On just that item?
Yeah, that one.
I wish to speak to that if I may.
Okay, Councilmember Burton?
So the comments that Councilman McConaughey made, I am in agreement with due to the circumstances with the holidays, with Thanksgiving and Christmas. However, the other two dates we have in there, I'm not in favor of. I think that we can miss the first night of Utah League Cities and Town Meeting and get the important parts by showing up on the next morning. The one in Salt Lake City is not difficult to do. I did that the last two years. I went a little bit before, came to council meeting, and went back the next day. And I missed a dinner, but I was able to fulfill our responsibilities here. I think the less we change it, the better it is for people who are used to when we hold it. So I would be opposed to moving the first two, but I'd be in favor of the second two.
Councilmember Whitelock?
For the April 25 one, whereas it's cheaper to drive than to fly, I plan on driving. So for me, I would appreciate it being moved, because otherwise, it'll be half of the day in because I won't be driving after a council meeting.
So someone like to make a motion? Councilmember Whitelock?
I move that we approve Resolution 1830, amending the meeting schedule with the addition of November and December changes, as Councilmember McConaughey suggested, November being the 7th and 14th, December the 5th and 12th.
Councilmember Lamb?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes five to one in favor.
Consent item 6C, approve Resolution 18-31, authorizing the mayor to execute the inter-local cooperation agreement between West Jordan City and Salt Lake County for cost sharing, 2017-2022 UPDES media campaign. And that was, was Councilmember Whitelock, did you pull that one? Or who pulled that one? Councilmember Burton?
Thank you. Yes, that was me. So this one's not a real big deal, but it, you know, every little bit adds up. Pretty soon, we're three millions. I agree that we should have continued this campaign, that we are teaching our residents where stormwater goes and how we're supposed to treat the stormwater. However, as I read in the packet in this, Salt Lake County wants to increase how much we pay for them for this media campaign, and they stated how effective that media campaign has been. Prior to this campaign getting started, very few people knew the importance of keeping that water clean and where it goes. And they, according to the numbers that are in there, so 70% of the people understand now where it's going. There's, the reason Salt Lake County wants to increase the rates, according to them, is because they have less people in their control, lack of a better word, that are paying into this fund from the county level because of the change in governments where the townships are now incorporated in there. And since the townships are there, they have less money coming in from their individual residents. So my question is, why aren't the townships paying that difference instead of us paying the difference? They want to raise our rate from 1% per person in the city to 1.5% per person in the city. If we can't increase the, get the money from those townships where it's been coming from before, where'd that money go? The second question I have, is since that media campaign's been so effective, and 70% of the media people are doing that, can we decrease how much we're spending on that and still keep the campaign going? Because there's only 30% left that we need to reach, but we want to continue the education going, and perhaps we can redo some of that cost. So those are some of the questions I have, and I'm hoping that somebody might be able to provide some answers for us, like Justin.
Justin, you've got an answer.
I definitely do. Thank you.
Or some information, anyway.
So I think I heard two questions. I'll try to address both of those. With regards to the costs associated with a media campaign, this is something that is required from the state's permit to all of the municipalities in the, in the state, including the county. And so this is a requirement that the city has to provide some sort of an education or media campaign regarding clean waters and that our storm drain drains to creeks, rivers, and streams. So it's something that we have to do. A number of years ago, when this was added to the stormwater permit, the county decided to, to create this Stormwater Coalition and do the, you know, We All Live Downstream campaign. And then they allowed all of the municipalities in Salt Lake County to piggyback onto their campaign, kind of at a nominal rate. Up until this past year, we were paying $10,000 per year towards the campaign, which is a great deal when you consider the requirements that were in the permit, to go out and provide published material, TV ads, billboards, you know, swag to hand out at the, you know, parades and all this kind of stuff. So it was a really good deal for all the municipalities to partner together. The state accepts the Salt Lake County Stormwater Coalition as a, as a valid education campaign. And so it became a very valuable thing for the city to participate in at a very great price. To address the other question you had regarding how it's funded, I think the staff report may be a little confusing in that, in that regard. Salt Lake County was actually paying for the, their portion of the Stormwater Coalition out of two different funds. The county is, is split into basically two different pieces. One is their municipal service area, which takes care of the, you know, the normal government, local government operations for those that aren't in any incorporated areas. And then they have another section of Salt Lake County that provides regional services. And the Stormwater Coalition, from the county standpoint, was being funded from both sides of their government. It was being, they were taking funds out of their regional flood control budget, and they were taking it out of the unincorporated municipal services budget. And when the, when the invoices are created for who pays into the program, it's based upon population, and it's always been based upon population. And so as agencies either join or leave, or whether it's Mill Creek incorporates, but they are still part of the coalition or not, it's all based upon the agency and their portion of the population in the program. What really changed is that Salt Lake County said, we're paying, we're paying out of both the right and the left hand. We're paying for both of the population base, like all of the other municipalities are, but we're also using part of our regional flood control budget to pay for it as well. They said that that was not the intent of how the coalition was supposed to be funded, and so they modified their agreement to only base it upon the population. So the- So the unincorporated areas still pay for their portion, and they base it based upon the population of the unincorporated areas, similar to all of the other municipalities. So they just don't have that portion coming out of the regional flood control budget anymore. Did I answer those questions properly?
You did, for the most part. And like I said, it's not a real big deal, so I'm not going to oppose it because I think it's a good thing, but I like to watch the checks and balances. The dollar amounts aren't that huge. For what we're getting out of it, I still think it's worth it. But when we go from one percent to one and a half percent, that's a fairly hefty increase, even though they're small numbers. So thank you for answering those.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, do you know, it looks like we've been paying into this for a few years. Has it always been ten thousand dollars, or was it eight thousand dollars a few years ago?
It was based upon population, but it capped it at ten thousand dollars. And so when our population hit a hundred thousand people, we capped at that ten thousand dollar mark. Before that, it was one percent per person. So if there were ninety thousand people in the city, we would have been paying nine thousand dollars. So once we hit, once we hit a hundred thousand residents, we capped out at the ten thousand mark.
And so if I understand this correctly, if we, this year we'll stay at ten thousand, but the next year it moves to sixteen, and is that, if I mean this correctly, it's going to go through two thousand twenty-two at that rate?
I believe so.
Okay, so it might change in two thousand twenty-three. So, okay.
And when they get to that point, they'll reevaluate the population of all the different areas, and it'll change based upon that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question, Justin, as well. You mentioned that the state approved this campaign as a valid educational method, or whatever it is, to meet their requirements. What would the process be if we wanted to do our own? Say we wanted to put a note in the utility bill, or something along those lines? Would we have to go through an approval process to get something like that approved with the county?
No, we wouldn't have to go through, well, we would have to let them know that we're no longer part of the coalition, we're no longer using their education campaign. But there's a list of requirements that we have to meet. At that point, we would have to let them know that we're doing our own thing, but then we would have to meet those requirements as part of our permit. And we anticipate the costs of doing the billboards and the news and the radio ads and all that kind of stuff would be far more than sixteen thousand.
So would that be, are those various media outlets, those various advertising outlets, are those specified in the requirements?
The requirements are specified.
So a note in the utility bill, then, for example, would probably not be sufficient?
That won't be enough, that's correct.
Okay, one other question. On the staff report, says the new fee for the next fiscal year will be based on fifteen cents per resident, and the coalition has estimated the total estimate at sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. I'm just doing math in my head. Point one five per resident, which resident isn't counted as a whole person? It's probably me, but, or it might be the mayor. I'm just wondering which, who's not counted as, I'm just kidding. I just noticed that the math doesn't add up to something times point one five. Pointing that out, thanks.
Anybody want to like to make a motion? Councilmember Burton?
I move to approve, which one is there? See, eighteen thirty-one? I can't even see on there. I move to approve eighteen thirty-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Consent item six C, approved Resolution eighteen dash thirty-three, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between West Jordan City and Salt Lake County for the installation of bike lanes and signage on thirteen hundred west from Winchester Drive to ninety-four hundred south in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Councilmember Whitelock?
So the reason I asked for this to be pulled is because I had questions similar to Mr. Jones, because I'm thinking, because when it comes to me saying it's a protected bike lane, and I'm like, what does that mean? And so I really don't know staff, I don't know who Bill is to begin with. I spoke to him on the phone, but is that you? Could we ask him to come up and give further? Because what I have on my phone is a lot more than what are on the notes, and I think that would be helpful.
We'd like to hear from our staff, Bill Bernowski.
It's always a pleasure to meet with the council and the mayor. I apologize in my staff report, I didn't include a picture of a protected bike lane. So I had to go to Google and really get a better definition of protected bike lane is a bike lane on steroids. So it's a wider bike lane with, you think of a typical bike lane, I don't know how many of you guys ride your bikes, I know Dirk. Knows what I'm talking about. You've got your bike lane, and then on the edge that's next to the street, you've got an extra three feet of paint to make it a protected bike lane. It's also called a buffered bike lane. That three feet between you and the cars is termed buffer or protection. So the goal of this newfangled bike lane, protected bike lane, is to make it more comfortable for a rider like you and me, maybe not like Dirk, he's a pretty good rider, but the rest of us, that we can feel more comfortable riding in traffic. So that's really the goal of this. Now, this project on Thirteenth West, a gentleman very, very well pointed out, that road's not wide enough currently for any bike lane. So we do have, we're always out getting all the money we can in grants. We've got a seven million dollar grant, and I think we're looking for six million more, if you know of any money out there, to widen that road. And then once it's widened, this little grant, only a hundred and fifteen thousand, is to put in those special buffered bike lanes. So that's, that's a really nice thing that the county does, they provide money for that. And if you've never seen one of these bike lanes, you have to go to Taylorsville City Hall. Oh, there's, so if you go to Taylorsville City Hall on Twenty-seventh West, and if you're riding your bike, you'll see this exact same thing on Twenty-seventh West. And I'd like you all to try it out, let me know if you like them or not. But this is the new standard. Anytime we pave a wide road in the city, we're going to actually install this new kind of bike lane. Because it's a lot better than what we currently have, and we think a lot more people will ride their bikes if they have this in place. So any more questions?
So I have a follow-up. So then we're going to approve the financing to paint a bike lane, but we don't have the money, all of the money yet to widen the road. So do we have an idea when we're going to widen the road?
I do, I've got a guy in the back here to help me with that, Dave? Do y'all know Dave?
A guy?
He's got the answers on that.
Thank you, Bill, thanks, Mayor, Council. The thirteen hundred west project, we've had a kickoff meeting with UDOT. The scheduled funding for that is in twenty twenty for the six million dollars that is available, plus a twenty percent rider from the city, so about one million dollars, so grand total of about seven point two million dollars for the total project, is the funding that's available coming in the year twenty twenty. We still have design efforts and environmental process to go through right now. And there's also right-of-way concerns, of course, that we're going to be working on between now and then. The totality of that project was twelve million that UDOT had put in for several years ago for Wasatch Front monies. So we have approximately half of the money that we need for the concept plan that was put out there by UDOT. And we're still searching for the rest of the funding.
Okay, so this grant that you want us to give approval for, I guess, for this money for the bike lanes, it doesn't have an expiration date?
So it does, it's in twenty nineteen. So if we don't get our act together, get all our ducks in a row by then, we have to ask for an extension. But that money will not go away. And it's a reimbursable fund, so it won't, we don't have to, we don't ask for a check back from the county until we spend that money, and we say we're ready for that reimbursement. So that will happen eventually, it's just, we're not sure when, it kind of depends.
So is it a competitive grant? I'm struggling to understand why it's on our agenda tonight for something two years from now.
So every year, we can apply for money from the county. So in the past, we have gotten grants from the county for bicycle lanes, and we spend it mostly on design. So we've got a bunch of these protected bike lanes ready to go. Next time we pave a road in the city, you'll start seeing this new, newfangled protected bike lane. You'll see it more and more. I wish we had done this in the past, but it's kind of a new, safer way to ride your bike.
Yeah, it certainly appears safer. I'm just not sure we have roads that are wide enough, thank you.
Yeah, right, we can't do it if the road's not wide enough, that's a very good point.
And if I could clarify, maybe, the money that we're talking about here is once it's paying for those extra paint stripes, all that stripage that creates the protective, and I'm putting my air fingers in quotes for the record, but that's what's the protective nature. And until we, you authorize that money that the county's willing to give us, then they can start planning for that by two thousand nineteen to put those protective lanes on the ground. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, this is government, it's complicated. I know that they make it complicated when they give you money, you have to get an interlocal agreement. I wish they could just give us a check.
So then, is the money going to pay? Thank you, guys. Is the money going to pay for the design for this, or for the actual paint and labor for this?
The paint, the paint and the signs.
Okay, thank you.
And it's about three and a half miles of facility. It could be some green paint that's really expensive, so we can definitely spend it on this project.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So before you leave, so there is an expiration date, and so we just need to, once we approve this, we'll need to approve an expiration or an extension. Is there any problem getting the extension? I just don't want this to go away.
I think that's just a technicality that the county will have. Hey, it's time, you should have spent your money by now. Have you done it? No, okay, apply for an extension. I think it's just a form to fill out.
And who decided that it would be Thirteenth West? Was that the county, or did we?
That's a great question. So I hope I can come back on another night and present the Redwood Road Plan. And UDOT and Wasatch Regional Council have looked at Redwood Road as the potential for bike lanes. And they've studied it and studied it and decided, Redwood Road is just not feasible for a bike lane. We'd have to widen and take out a lot of houses and businesses. So they said, well, are there any parallel streets to Redwood Road that would work? And Thirteenth West won, they said, hey, this is the best parallel road to Redwood Road. We don't have to put all our bikes on Redwood Road. Let's encourage people to use Thirteenth West, and let's make that a first-class bike facility. So that's the goal. We can't, I wish we can do bike lanes everywhere, but it's not possible.
Don't we have another east-west road designated for bike lanes from the county's plan? North-south, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you got me mixed up.
It's all right, because it seems like to me when I saw the county's plans, there were some other north-south roads that have bike lane plans.
We do. So we've planned, we have a similar plan already in place for Twenty-seventh West, Thirty-two West, Forty-eighth West. Those are roads that are already widened. And next time we go in and do a resurfacing, we will put, we'll put a similar protected bike lane on those roads.
So why do we not want to use this money for one of those roads, and use future money for that road when it's ready?
So Salt Lake County is very wise. They looked at the whole county and said, the best way to spend our money, or their money, that they're giving, and the money they give us, is to do this when you widen a road or resurface a road. If you went out and tried to change all the striping now, it would just, it looked really bad, and it would cost, you know, three or four times the money. So that, they don't have that much money to really do every street to go and redo them. But, very good question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Living off of Thirteenth West and driving in on a daily basis, it's obviously not ready today for the striping, but since this money is a grant and it's coming back to us, which, you know, it says it's county money, but that's our money as well. I move to approve Resolution eighteen thirty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
We'll now move to our public hearing. Public hearing item eight A, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance eighteen dash zero seven regarding amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Title thirteen zoning regulations. Section thirteen dash eight dash twenty-three regarding annual cap on multifamily citywide applicability, city of West Jordan, African Scott Langford. So we'll ask David if he wants to address that, or, oh, there's Scott, Scott is here. He's hiding behind his microphone.
Thanks, Mayor. Duncan Murray from our attorney's office has worked closely with our city planning staff on this particular item, and so I'll actually turn the time over to Duncan to address this issue.
Mayor and Council, I think all of you are aware that we do have a cap-and-grade ordinance in place, and that cap-and-grade ordinance was passed back in October twenty-second, two thousand fourteen. The main premise of that ordinance is, is it establishes ratios, percentages of single-family and multifamily dwellings. And in particular, the maximum percentage allowed by that ordinance is twenty-three percent multifamily. There are, however, certain exceptions which were put into place in that ordinance that's been amended a couple of times over the last few years. And this particular, well, let me just mention some of those existing exemptions. One is for senior housing, age fifty-five and older. Another is multifamily housing for disabled persons. Another one is for low and moderate income housing. Another one is for multifamily housing as part of a master planned community that has seventy-five or more acres. And another one is multifamily housing in a transit station overlay district, which is basically near a tracks, UTA track station. What's before you tonight, and what was prepared by planning staff and then reviewed after a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission and was approved by them unanimously, is a, it's a proposed change to add one additional exemption, and that would be for twin homes on vacant parcels in an existing R-two zone. So this is a very limited exception. And if you can see the slide that's on the screen, the main two prerequisites in order to qualify for this exemption would be that as of the date that the cap-and-grade ordinance was passed, namely October twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, that on that date and since that date, the property was zoned R-two and was vacant, meaning there was no dwelling on there. So essentially, the argument would be for someone making an application to come in under this exemption is that but for the cap-and-grade ordinance, they qualify in that particular zone. And then they would be allowed to apply. Three additional requirements are there. If they meet those two prerequisites, then they would still have to go through three application processes. And the, just got to turn this on. The first application process would be a subdivision process. The second process would be for site planning. And then lastly, it would be a building permit process. There is a two-year time period in which they would have to apply two weeks, or two years from years from the date that the ordinance is passed, presumably today if it is approved. They would have two years in which to complete these application processes. At the end of the ordinance, there is actually also a formal sunset clause, which means the ordinance ceases to be effective or automatically goes out of existence as of that day of February 28. As long as someone has started all three of those processes within that two-year period and as long as they successfully complete those processes, soon thereafter, they would be able to meet this exception. The ordinance would have citywide applicability. However, there's only one or two main properties that we've identified that could potentially be applicable. There might be one or two more that may have been missed. So it presumably would not have very much of an effect. We don't believe it would cause more than at most two or three twin homes to be able to fit in under this exemption. With that in mind, if there's any other questions for me.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question. The lot does not have to be subdivided currently, correct? It just has to be vacant and the zoning has to be in place. Is that right?
Well, currently, a twin home cannot be applied for at all in the R2 zone.
Correct, but I mean, so the, yeah, okay.
Oh, well, you mean like in another zone that's?
No, I mean, the lot, the lot upon which somebody could apply for this permit under this new exemption does not have to already be subdivided.
Right. It could be exactly a single parcel.
Right.
And that's why I framed the first and second as prerequisites that have to already be in effect. If they're in effect, then somebody can, after the fact, through the application process, subdivide that one parcel that qualifies into the two lots and also do the site plan and building permits. Because a twin home, as opposed to a duplex, each, there's basically two zero-lot line dwellings that share the same wall, but they each own their own separate land space around their houses. But you're right, they don't have to be two separate lots already. It could be one parcel and be subdivided after.
Okay, what I'm looking for here is an unintended consequence, and I'm wondering, I know there's only a handful of properties at the most that this would apply to currently, but is there anybody in an R2 zone currently that may have a large lot that may say, hey, now I can subdivide and build on the back lot another twin home? For example, let's just say they have a half-acre lot and it has a twin home on part of it or is zoned R2 for whatever reason. They can come, it's not a vacant lot now, but if they subdivide it, the backyard was never built on, so that has always been vacant, and it's always been zoned R2. So they could come in at this point and say, hey, I'm going to cut off my backyard, put another twin home back there, because I don't have to have it already subdivided yet. All I have to have is the zoning and vacancy to meet the requirements. So that's what I'm looking for, is I don't know if any of those properties exist in the city. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at the whole map, but.
I would like to address that.
Yeah, I think I made my question clear.
I would like to. Yeah, when this request came in, my staff and I, we did a full GIS analysis. We looked at aerial photos. There are two properties that currently would conform and meet these criteria, one of which is just north of Home Depot. The other is owned by Rocky Mountain Power and is currently, they've initiated some rezoning applications on that. To address your point, there are some older properties along 2200 West where there's an exist, there are existing homes, but they would not be able to, in their current configuration, either, A, they weren't legally properly subdivided before, they're old parcels, they're not subdivided lots, and/or we don't think, based on our analysis, that they could meet the criteria for actually subdividing and getting a twin home. So we've gone through and honestly, as we've analyzed this, the potential effect of this, we only can really feasibly see one property being able to utilize this particular amendment.
And that one parcel could only, with its land size and frontage, could only support one twin home, which is one parcel turning into two lots. The other thought pattern is, is if hypothetically we had missed through our GIS search a parcel that could fit the fact pattern you described, Councilmember Jacob, then the way this is written, they could not re-subdivide ahead of time to try to fit the fact pattern, because it's written in a way that it's a vacant parcel that's already vacant, already exists and has existed since October 22, 2014. So if somebody's trying to create a lot to try to conform, that's not going to, that's not going to pass muster under this proposed ordinance the way it's written.
Thank you. Paul DeGruin.
I was just going to point out that the legal interpretation of two, one, it allows someone to create a new vacant parcel and then apply. So that's all I was going to point out. Duncan addressed it.
Thank you. Councilmember Connahey.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did have a question on a couple of these points for Duncan. If we've only got two parcels, really, one of them's only feasible, that's kind of the basis for my question, thinking there's only very, very limited applications here. Bullets three, four, and five that are up on the screen right now, do we even need these? Because number three, if it's been properly, it has to be properly subdivided prior to the issuance of building permits. I would think we wouldn't issue building permits anyway if it wasn't properly subdivided, so that seems redundant. The site plan needing the review and approval, is that something, a process that already exists that has to happen anyway? And then number five, completion of application with all fees, that has to happen, but then the sunset, I really don't see the need for it if it's so very limited in scope. So as I'm hearing this, I'm questioning if numbers three, four, and five are needed.
Yeah, I think I could address those one at a time. Subsection three, the thought pattern is if you're starting with one parcel and you're putting one twin home on it, at a minimum, you have to subdivide that parcel into two separate lots, which divide the two units. So at a minimum, you have to do that subdivision process. And so it's just a good reminder to people that most likely, we're assuming they're starting with one parcel, finishing with two lots. It's more than anything else is to put the person on notice that here's a process that would have to apply. As to section four, or subsection four, that particular one, that some people don't recognize the design review process that we have right now, and again, puts them on notice. Plus, it's kind of a timing issue that that has to be done before the building permit. Without that being there, someone might have the reasonable expectation that they could just come and pull a building permit first. And then the subsection five, that one at least puts someone on reasonable notice that the sunset provision, that they have to apply within the two years, even though it's at the very bottom in the legislative history, it's kind of good to put it right in there. There, you know, someone could make the argument, there's a little redundancy, but the case law is that if someone makes an application and the city hasn't done a good enough job of telling them how our processes work, they could have a cause of action against this. This alleviates any of those concerns, especially where it is kind of a unique process for a very unique situation. And plus, over the long term, if it sunsets after two years, then that extra verbiage disappears at that point anyway. So basically, it's just good noticing to people.
Thank you. I think that answers my question, so I'll hold off on my thoughts until after the public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Scott, can you tell me where the Rocky Mountain Power property is or approximately where it is?
Sure. It's located approximately on the northeast side of the city. It's right next to the border of Murray. It has, it's, let's see, we should have had a slide. There's, the power line's just west of the Jordan River, and it kind of runs north-south. It's just south of Winchester, if you can picture that.
Okay.
So it's a very small, I think it's roughly an acre in size.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council? Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing at this time and invite anyone that wants to address this. You can come to the microphone and state your name and contact information. You'll have three minutes.
Michael Park, 8770 South, 1480 West. I am the one who has that piece of property north of Home Depot. I've been in that, I've been here in this city for 40 years, and when we built, when they built the twin homes there, I sold part of my property so that they could do that. And in the process, at that time, 30 years ago, I had it rezoned. So when it came time for me to retire, it's been a garden space for 40 years, which I've been able to just share with all my neighbors, and they're very sad to see it go. So I did all that 30 years ago so that when this time came, I could, you know, build a twin home on it and enjoy retirement, until I found out that there was a cap-and-grade, and then I'm going, well, this is not fair. I've done everything I was supposed to years ago when I had it rezoned so that I had everything in place when I decided to do this. And so, yeah, that's the reason for doing this is because I want to go spend some time with my grandkids fishing and camping instead of gardening. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this issue? Please come forward.
Thank you, council. Ben Southworth. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. I wanted just to real quickly say that, from the get-go, I wanted to make a comment on this whole cap-and-grade issue here. I argued against that was put in place, and I know that was a while ago, it was before most of your time. Councilman Connahey was there, Councilman Jacob probably on the Planning Commission at the time. The reason being were a couple. What we're seeing tonight, I think, is something that I kind of foresaw at the time. You end up with a policy or a law on your books where you're forced to make all kinds of exceptions. And if you look at all your exceptions, there's a whole lot of them, and they're just piling up, and they're going to keep coming. In my estimation, the way I described it then, we'll describe it now, I think it's a lazy way to govern and plan, to do something like this, was reaction to a time, the things that were happening at the time. And so I can understand where it came from, but I would challenge this council, and this is the message I have for you tonight, I'd challenge this council to think about, you're a different council in a different time, maybe there's a different answer to the needs of the city and not the cap-and-grade. We can find ways, there are places in this city where density belongs and there are places where absolutely does not belong. And I think you have the fortitude to make those type of decisions and not to fall back on something like a cap-and-grade, you know, to try to hide behind that. Make those decisions and do it right. Let's not say that everybody just gets their fair share, or let's not force everything into a bucket where now, I believe, if we look at the numbers, we're probably having overabundance of the exceptions. We have a lot of senior housing. We have a lot, maybe we're getting a lot of low and moderate income. Maybe we're getting all of these exceptions that come up there, and so probably time to look at that and say, you know, are the unintended consequences that we thought maybe are happening, are they rearing their head? Are we seeing that happen? And if they are, then I challenge you, find a better way. I'm going to say you're a better council. I can say that, I was on the last one. You're a better council. I'm sitting back and smiling, loving what I'm seeing and hearing. So I just challenge you today to do that. Let's not continue to make our code like the tax code with all kinds of exceptions. Let's find that different path, and that's my challenge. So I just want to plant a seed in each one of your minds tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this issue? Please come forward.
Steve Jones, 3234 West, 16920 South. I just also want to remind, I'm okay with change. I mean, change happens, but what I don't want to happen to my city is to look at parts of South Jordan and see nothing but apartment complexes. That's why this cap-and-grade was put in place. And while former councilman has a different thought on that, what I see right now is, without exception, we get almost every single council meeting, we got somebody here that wants to change to put in higher-density homes rather than single-family homes that are well-spaced out that give us a little room to breathe. We want to see how close we can pack them in there, and I don't want to see that for West Jordan. I don't want to become another West Valley city. I don't want to become another area that's so truncated with apartments that our service departments, our firefighters, and our police are overwhelmed because they're spending all their time, instead of cruising my neighborhood and taking care of me, they're spending all their time in the apartment complexes because that's where the problems reside. So be careful what you do. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Connahey.
Thank you, Mayor.
I believe for the most part, I'm supportive of what's been proposed, although I would like to see numbers three, four, and five that are up on the screen right now removed from, should there be a motion to pass something, I'd like to see these three removed. While I understand the concern or the argument for having them included, I think it, I'm not a fan of having code reference code, because then when we have to go back and change our processes, if we overlook something, that also creates an opportunity for somebody to bring litigation against us. And knowing that we have a rewrite of code that's got to happen prior to January 2020, I'd like to try and keep things as simple as possible. So my recommendation would be, well, I would be supportive of a motion approving this, with the exception of those three elements, number three, four, and five that are on the screen. To what Mr. Southworth, former councilmember Southworth suggested, I agree. We took some quick measures, and I feel like we took a jackhammer to try and address something that needed to be whittled down to an approach with a scalpel instead. And I think we're making good progress there. Just for the benefit of those in the audience, we have reinstated the General Planning Committee, and we have, I don't think it's calendared yet. I know our strategic planning council member Anderson left with the task to find dates that work for the city council to meet with the Planning Commission so that we can reevaluate the future land use map and make sure we are taking the appropriate approach to zoning, because, well, we already heard the case during the public hearing. But to circle back, I think this is appropriate. There's a time and a place for certain kinds of building, certain kinds of density. If something is already zoned R2, especially with the neighborhood's already built out to R2, that was the intent, it goes along with the neighborhood, it doesn't seem appropriate to restrict it. So I would be supportive of this if we remove those three bullets. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Ideally, I would like to see duplexes removed from the cap-and-grade altogether, but the last council didn't agree with me on that, and as a result of that, this is what we have instead. I think this is tighter than what we need to do, but I would be in favor of this so we can make this happen for those people who have the need and who make the plans, and we could change their plans. And I would be very happy to eliminate three, four, and five. So at that, I would like to move that we.
1807.
There we go. So approve ordinance 1807, less subsections three, four, and five. Pardon me?
Councilmember Connahey.
Second.
Second, with the clarification that those sections to be removed, as we're looking at this, you've got section A, section B, and then section B, number one, then subsection F. I know I'm not using the appropriate terms, but B, and then one, and then F is the three, four, five. four, five underneath that, F.
So it's actually F 13-8-23BF?
BF345.
So we have a motion and a second. And would you like to one more time state that motion?
I would like to hear from Scott Langford, if I may. Is that okay?
Scott?
Sorry to interrupt. Just to clarify, point number four, the requirement to be reviewed by the design review committee, twin homes are not currently required to be reviewed by design review. So that is above and beyond what would normally be required in what we normally would approve in an R2. Just wanted to point that out. I'm good either way. I just wanted to make that clear, that that is above and beyond what we would normally would require.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you. So to clarify my motion, I move to adopt ordinance 1807. Eliminating, would you read that for me, please? Yes.
In ordinance 13-8-23, subsection B, subsection F, items three, four, and five.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
It's actually B1F.
Oh, B1, oh, okay, yes. B1F, okay, good, got it.
Okay, that...
You guys.
That helps. And that still goes with your second?
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Whitelock?
Okay, so I just want to ask legal, by, I understand redundancy and the problem you face when you've got code in multiple places, and you can easily miss something. And I get that. But I also get that we pay you folks a fair amount of money to advise us. And it makes me nervous to go in and blow away your council. So while I'm okay with saying yes to what's been requested from staff, I'm a little uncomfortable with this. So I wanted, wanted to get your input.
And if I can address that concern, three, four, and five can be seen from, certainly from a legal standpoint, to be policy decisions. From the standpoint of condition number five, it helps us maintain a clean record as we roll into 2020. The new documentations that allow us, if you'll see on the very last page, the ordinance history, you'll see that the ordinance history is effective until you tell a date. If you take that February 28th, 2020 out, it'll go on until the rewrite removes it. So from our purposes of looking at it, you want to set a policy that doesn't have a review of design, that's a policy decision you make. If you don't want to do it within subdividers, with insurances of the building permit process, that's your policy decision. I ask you to consider leaving in item five, so that for purposes of making sure it's clear to everybody when you enacted this, do you want that repealed in 2020? If you don't, you're sending the message that when we rewrite the form of government, we're to leave this in. Does that make sense? So there would be that exception to the cap and grade, but it isn't intended to wash out in 2020.
Before Councilman McConaughey brought that up, I was in favor of taking that out. I don't think that's a necessary restriction. I have no problem with if something that we missed were to come up that we could look at and prove it. I don't have a problem with duplexes or twin homes anyway. So I think that's an unnecessary thing. But if that's what it takes, it is to pass, then I will accept it. But if we can pass without that, I would, that would be my first choice.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would prefer that we leave out that sunset clause, just because, out of fairness, if there is something else that comes up, somebody, I'd rather not have to go through this again, and then someone make the case that, well, you did this for somebody else, you should do this for me as well. It makes it feel like, okay, well, we're allowing a 24-month period for anybody to come and do this. It really feels like legislating for just one particular case, if we have it that narrow. If this is good policy now, I don't see why it wouldn't be good policy a couple of years from now. If it's not good policy a couple of years from now, I would prefer to have a full conversation about why that policy should be changed. I don't like the idea of doing something with a sunset in this, in this particular case. So I would prefer to stand with the original motion that's on the table. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Burton. I have no problem with twin homes and duplexes in our city. The one thing I do want to reiterate is that I do have a problem with where they're put. Now, in this case, if you look at where this land is and the other houses that are around it, makes total sense. And that's why I'll be voting yes for this tonight.
And let's vote.
Okay. So for clarification for myself, we are removing three, four, and five.
That's the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Mayor Riding?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
The vote passes 4 to 2.
So we'll now move to our business items. Business items 9A, discussion and possible action regarding resolution 18-36, authorizing a waiver of the monthly availability charge for a 10-inch and an 8-inch water meter connection, which serve to provide redundancy and fire protection for the Jordan Valley Medical Center. Wendell is on here, but it's now going to be Justin.
Yeah, so a little bit of background on this issue. A couple of years ago, we were in the middle of some issues with the Jordan Valley Medical Center. And we realized the Jordan Valley Medical Center's water system is a, is a challenge, I guess, is a polite way of saying it. They had a number of irrigation meters, a number of culinary meters, and fire services that scattered all across the project site. They had a portion of their campus that was set to a zone two water line, and another portion of their campus that was set to a zone three water line. So some of the medical towers that were on the west side of the campus didn't have enough water pressure to truly get the water to flow off the top floor of the building. And so we met with John Butterfield there, the COO with the Jordan Valley Medical Center, and with his facilities manager. And we worked out a plan to try to resolve some of the issues on there. And in following an example that I've done at another municipality, we decided to master meter the campus rather than individually metering, water metering each of the buildings on the campus. And by doing that, we take out the ambiguity and the complexity of the system. We put the meters up on the right-of-way where they typically go. And we put them all on a zone three pressure, so that all of their buildings have adequate pressure. They were using booster pumps on their site to make sure that their main building had enough water pressure, because part of their main building also went through the zone two line. So we went through all of these exercises. You've seen some issues before in improving easements for the meters. What we did was we took three of the connections that went into the campus, we removed detector checks, which are typically used to monitor fire flow, and we replaced them with water meters. And so we have two 8-inch water meters and one 10-inch meter. Your packet shows the locations of those, but those are, there's two of them off 9,000 South, and one of them off 3,400 West. And we did so to kind of clean up the site, master meter the project at the property line, which is appropriate to our policy. But it also allows the hospital to get off their booster pumps, and it allows them a little bit more flexibility as they move forward. The Jordan Valley Medical Center has a master plan where they anticipate adding additional buildings and refurbishing their main building. And I don't want to go into the details, that's not my project. But they wanted the flexibility to be able to make modifications on the property without tripping over water lines and meters. We were finding meters that we didn't know existed anymore. We found connections that may not have been connected to meters. And so this whole project was really a cleanup project to make sure that we, we are properly metering their water use, and we're cleaning up their, the water system on their campus, so they can move forward with future development. What the issue that you're seeing here today, by making this change and master metering the campus, what we typically do with any culinary water service is there's the availability charge, and then there's the charge on the water bill for consumption. Rather than charging the, we were charging the availability charges on all these little meters, rather than charging them the availability charge on all three of the big meters, which were primarily used for fire protection and redundancy in case of emergency, we wanted to make sure that we were only properly charging them the availability charge on the culinary water that they, that they use. We, your packet shows that in all of the meters that they had on their campus, they were using about 600 gallons per minute as a maximum capacity for all of their meters. By charging them the availability charge on an 8-inch meter, it increases their capacity to 800 gallons per minute, which goes along with their master plan to add additional buildings. But it doesn't charge them the extra eight and the extra 10-inch meter, because those were never intended to serve as culinary water needs. And they definitely don't need culinary water for two eights and a 10-inch meter. Only the council can grant a waiver to availability charges. So we wanted to present that to you guys. Ask for a waiver of the availability charge for one of the 8-inch meters and the 10-inch meter, and proper, and just properly charge them the availability charge on the single eight, which they use for culinary water. And ask if you have any questions.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask a question I already know the answer to, just so it's on the record. Is there any additional cost incurred by the city for having those additional connection points?
There were about $60,000 that the city put in to, we upgraded one of the vaults, and we replaced the meters. The hospital shared in that cost as part of the project. In the long run, it will save us the maintenance costs. We figure it'll pay back. And it pays back for them, too.
So as we go, as, I'm not talking about construction or the initial setup. I mean, month to month, as we're going, just going day by day, is there any additional cost or expense incurred by the city, whether we have one connection or whether we have three connections?
No. In fact, the costs will go down for us. Rather than going on to their campus and reading potentially a dozen different meters, and maintaining three different, or I think, I think there was more than three, I think there was five different detector checks, along with the irrigation services, and trying to isolate and accommodate their construction, our costs will go down, because now we will just maintain the three meters of the street. One additional issue that that brings to mind, as we were going through this exercise with Jordan Valley Medical Center, we could not find any sort of documentation regards to the ownership of the lines on the campus. There was some disagreements on who was responsible for what. And so with this, we will proceed to prepare a memorandum of understanding with the medical center that outlines the responsibilities of the water pipes and stuff on their campus as their responsibility.
Thank you, Justin. I'll add that when I first read this, my initial thought was, again, I'd prefer not to be doing something specific to one entity. I'd prefer to see something that says hospitals in general, we're willing to do this. But given the complexity with the system that's out there, and some of the other things that are needed, like you just mentioned, the MOU for who owns what, who's responsible for what, it probably does make sense in this case to have a resolution that is with one specific party rather than a policy decision in general. So I'll be supportive of this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on some of your comments, which I like where you're going with it, you mentioned that they'll have two eights and one 10. But their mound of water would be sufficient if it just came in through one eight, so we're just going to charge them for the one eight. Why do we have a 10-inch connected to them if they don't need that? And why would we not want to charge them for that? Why are we charging for the eight instead?
Great question. So as I mentioned before, there were already two eights and a 10-inch line that entered their campus to provide the fire service for the property. There was a loop that came off of 3,400 West and looped around the property, and then tied back in on 9,000 South. To minimize the total expense for the project, what we really did was we just made modifications to where those three lines entered the property, took out the detector checks, and put meters in in those locations. The reason why we didn't, we aren't metering the 10 rather than the eight, you'll notice in the packet, we went through the American Water Works Association M22 manual, which outlines the capacity of water meters. And we looked at all of the water services that are on the campus, and what they currently could provide as a maximum flow rate. And I believe it was around, you know, 600, 600 or 625, it's in the, in the report. When we looked at the water meter capacity for an 8-inch meter, that 8-inch meter capacity is 800 gallons per minute. So it does provide them the additional capacity. A 10-inch meter is beyond crazy on what its water meter capacity is. And the availability charge for a 10-inch, if you can actually find a 10-inch meter, is extremely expensive. The medical center was willing to pay the up charge to move to a 10-inch availability, or to an 8-inch availability charge, I'm sorry. But a 10-inch is not used multiple severance circumstances.
So in other words, it costs less money to leave it at 10 instead of changing it down?
Correct, making the modifications to the existing line.
And then with their expansions, the 8-inch will still handle all their expansion needs?
Correct.
And if we're to go beyond that, then we would consider relooking at that?
Correct. We can, we can make that adjustment in the future and build them for the 10 instead of the eight.
And I do understand that how the volume increases dramatically when it goes in size. For example, an 8-inch line carries four times as much water as a 4-inch line, even though it sounds like it's only double the size, it's four times the volume. So, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
I move to approve resolution 18-34.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I'll second it.
If I might correct that to 18-36.
Okay, thank you. So if we have a, we have a motion with a correction and a second, a discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Business item 9B, discussion and possible action regarding resolution 18-37, authorizing an amendment to a memorandum of agreement between the City of West Jordan and Salt Lake City Corporation. Again, Justin.
So this item is in particular to some easement language for the South Valley Regional Airport. We've got, we've got Matt Williams, our property manager here. If there's any questions for either me or Matt, we'd be happy to entertain those.
I see no questions. So is there someone who would entertain a motion? Councilmember Whitelock?
I move that we pass resolution 1837.
Councilmember McConaughey? We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
This item 9C, discussion and possible action regarding city council assignments to committees, mayor and council. So we have, somebody like to discuss that one? 9C. Pull that one up. Councilmember Burton?
While you're looking that up, I'd be happy to discuss it.
Okay.
I noticed that there's two committees that are listed on this one. And in my recollection from our strategic planning, we had discussed both of those. There were some names on one committee, but there's no names for the Utah League of Cities and Towns. And my understanding was... And my understanding was that Councilman McConaughey was going to be the third person on there, to be that third voting member. I don't know why his name's not on there, but if for some reason you don't want that position, I would be very happy to have that position.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I saw when the list came out, I believe Heather shot out an email saying, here's a list of all the assignments. I believe I shot back a note saying, on that one, we actually have three slots. From strategic planning decision was that it was going to be Mr. Brickie, the mayor, and myself. Prior to then, it was the mayor, Mr. Brickie, and Mr. Langford. So I think she had just missed the one. So I shot back a note with the clarification, but since we don't have the whole thing in the packet.
Let's see, I'm, I'm looking it up right now.
So with that, are you still okay with being the third person?
Oh yeah, I've been attending with the exception of one, one week.
Okay, so that one, on the Utah League of Cities and Towns, there's number two on there. We have the mayor, Mr. Brickie, and Mr. McConaughey, Councilmember McConaughey. What about the Parks Master Plan Advisory Committee? Do we have names for that one? Okay. So an email sent, so I have Chad and Chris. So Chad Lamb and Chris McConaughey? Are those the two we want to keep on there? Are you folks okay with that? So then, do we have a motion? Councilmember Lamb, well, see, Brian Clegg, you've got a...
Yeah, just to clarify on the Parks Master Plan Advisory Committee, this, we just had our kickoff meeting to start the whole process. We're trying to get a couple council members, staff members, different stakeholders involved in this. This is only going to be for three meetings. It isn't a permanent committee. So it's only going to, the advisory committee to get it going.
Okay. Councilmember Lamb.
I was just going to clarify, there was an email sent out and I'm on the Parks, I've been on the Parks Committee the past few years and I'm the council liaison for that. So my name was put out there and obviously Chris McConaughey agreed to it as well. So I move, if, if a motion is in need, to approve these council assignments for both the Parks Master Plan Advisory Committee and for the ULCT Legislative Policy Committee.
Councilmember Burton.
Before I second that, I would like to adjust that, if I may, is put me as an alternate. If any of the other three cannot attend, I can be an alternate for any of those three as a voting member to Utah League Cities and Towns.
So are you okay with your motion to add Councilmember Burton as an alternate to the three?
So the three or the primary?
The three are the primary. Councilmember Burton would be the alternate to the three. If, if Councilmember Lamb's okay with that.
Are you making any motion?
Or adjust your motion?
I, I don't believe ULCT will allow an alternate to vote though, will they? It was my understanding, I'm getting the confirmation, yeah. So I'm happy for you to be that, but with the understanding that you will be non-voting.
All right, I'd like to make another motion, a substitute motion. So I, I move to approve the council assignments for the Parks Master Plan Advisory Committee and also the ULCT Legislative Policy Committee with the mayor, city manager David Brickie and Chris McConaughey as the three committee members and Dirk Burton as an alternate.
And Councilmember McConaughey?
Second for discussion, and I have some discussion too.
We have, we have a motion and seconds, we'll open up the discussion with Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I'm looking over Ms. Briggs' shoulder at the list of assignments with the Parks Master Plan Advisory Committee, it looks like they're asking for two people. So that'd be myself and Councilmember Lamb. Do we want an alternate for that one as well?
It's only for three meetings, so...
Oh, never mind then.
Okay.
So I'm happy as is.
Any discussion, any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes, six in favor. And I will email the updated version to all of you in the morning. Okay?
Okay. Business item 9D, discussion and possible action regarding funding for improvement projects at the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility, SVWRF Water Treatment Plant. David Brickie.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going to ask Justin Stoker to return to the podium and give us an update regarding that matter. And I'm going to ask to reserve two minutes at the end of his presentation just to update a little bit about that.
Okay.
I was trying to be really quick about this. A couple of weeks ago, you received a presentation from Roger Payne and Lee Rollins, the general manager from the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility. The meeting last Wednesday, the financial advisors, I believe Louis Young, met with the Board of Directors for the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility and presented them some financial recommendations regarding the projects that they had outlined. For your, for your recollection, they were talking about the nutrient removal of phosphorus and nitrogen, which is a mandate. And then there was a grit removal, which was, they were planning on doing five years down the road. Due to some anticipated interest rate changes over the next year and the rise in construction costs, the financial advisors for the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility recommended combining the projects together and bonding immediately for the, those two projects. There's a great amount of savings that can be done by doing so. And so we wanted to bring this item back to you. Dave Zobel's prepared a bunch of financial information, can speak to the financial benefits of participating. But it really comes down to the decision of joining the Water Reclamation Facility in the bond that they're preparing or to bond ourselves for it. We recommend joining them in their bond and taking advantage of the cost savings.
And so I suppose, David, you've got some, some information that'll show the savings regarding doing it now rather than later?
Yeah, but you're talking about estimates. I mean, at the present time, they anticipate that the construction costs would inflate by at least 5% a year. And so, you know, that project was three to, or two to five years out, depending upon how things went. They would rather do it now and save, you know, any, you know, anywhere from 10% and above on those. They figured that the interest rates you're looking, the projection for the Fed is that they will raise three times this year. March, June, and December are the anticipated dates for that. So getting ahead of a couple of those interest rate increases makes some sense as well. And then, of course, doing a bond as of a larger size, you get some other interest from some larger companies, which could come back to your pricing metrics, saving some money on the interest rate that might have to pay there as well. There's a few other small things that, you know, like having the debt on their books instead of on our books might be an advantageous thing for us in the future, so...
So another question I have too is then, that bond is going to be for about $11 million, our portion of it?
I mean... That's the anticipated at the present time. Obviously, we're a little early, but they're trying to get ahead of the curve on the interest rate increases. It's being designed, or they've got a contract with somebody to do that design now. And they anticipated starting the first project initially in September, but now they're trying to move that up.
And how are we anticipating making those bond payments?
Well, that would come back to us in the form of, you know, depending upon how we, so we would have some ability to determine the years that we wanted to have our portion out covered for. But that would come to us in a monthly cost associated with operating the plant down there.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. You kind of touched on my question, what's the anticipated term for the bond?
Well, you know, right now, we haven't run any of that. It just came to us last, well, I heard about it Wednesday evening, just before 5:00. So we haven't run any of those. You know, we've certainly tried to do things in a judicial manner about paying those back. So probably somewhere in that 10 to 15-year range would be what we were looking at on the bond.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, do we know, are the other cities in favor of doing this? And are they at the portion now where they've already said yes, or where are we at with that?
Yes, the other cities are in favor of it. The South Valley Water Reclamation, or the South Valley Sewer District, which is one of the five agencies, they absolutely have to participate with the bond to be able to financially accommodate the expenses. The other agencies, the Sandy Suburban District, the Mid Valley, and Midvale are doing so more out of convenience. Mid Valley and Sandy Suburban could likely pay cash, but are all in favor of doing it as a, as a facility bond.
Okay. I mean, and just a scenario here, and I've discussed this with others as well, is, you know, what if we as a city decided the 4.3 million for the phosphate makes sense? Move forward with that, but what if we say no to the 6.7 million for the grit, which doesn't necessarily be done immediately?
I guess I don't understand the question. You mean, we just don't want to participate in the project?
I guess the question is, if we decide as a city not to do the grit part right now, can we just do the 4.3 million for the phosphate?
I don't think we can. We are member agencies for the South Valley Sewer District. The project is moving forward and so, I mean, we're obligated to pay for...
I guess that's what I'm getting to. It seems like we don't have a choice in some matters, so...
The choice we have is how we're going to pay for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? And we'll entertain a motion. Oh, David? Discussing during the motion? I don't see anybody wanting to make a motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. There's not really a resolution or anything associated with this, just a motion to give direction to staff.
No, I apologize. Let me clarify. One of the council members approached me about reminding a discussion that needs to come back within two weeks of a decision. This is sort of a funding decision. So in keeping with that, once you've made the decision related to this, then I was going to remind everyone that we might need to revisit something, if that makes sense.
The way I understood it is the direction to give staff to move ahead with the funding.
That at this point is needed on this matter, yes. You'll see, we need to help, direction provided to Mr. Zobel, so he can start moving forward with, are we going to provide bonding of our own? Are we going to provide bonding with cash? You can see of the possible funding options there at the bottom of page two. It would be nice to know if the council wants to meditate on this, come back and let us know in, in March. But as indicated by Councilmember Lamb's question, this is coming. They've, I think, made a decision. They're, they're going to make us make a decision as to how we're going to pay for it.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So when it comes to funding, we've got a couple options. We could go along with the bond or we could use some of the surplus that we have right now and then figure out how to cover the difference ourselves. I would like to go with kind of a hybrid approach. I'd like to direct staff to proceed with the bond, but then see how quickly we can pay some of that down with the surplus that we have. That being said, the remainder, I want to make sure that we allocate it out over a decent period of time. I've said it a few times before in the prior council, I don't know how many times I've said it here. There's a time and a place for bonding. Debt is different when it comes to city finances than it is with your home finances. With personal finances, usually the thought is debt's bad, you want to eliminate that. With municipalities, it's a little bit different because debt gives you the opportunity to spread out those costs over the lifetime of the project and among the people who are going to be using the, using the project. It's not fair to the folks who live here now to charge them everything upfront that's going to give a project maybe 20, 30 years, because what if somebody's here for a few months, they pay everything and then they end up moving away? They don't get any of the benefits. So I want to try and spread out as much as, as much of the expense as we can over the people who are using it. But that said, based on our conversation previously, we do have some, some additional funds in there that aren't necessarily needed for ongoing operations or capital improvements. So I'd still like to see what we could do to use that to pay down our portion so that we don't have that large surplus sitting out there. So my, again, not a motion, but my recommendation would be that we direct staff to proceed with the bonding. But then when it comes time for financing decisions from council, I think this will tie in, the specifics would probably tie in better when we have a rate conversation for the 2018, 2019 year rather than necessarily tying it in with the bonding conversation. But I would like to proceed with the bond with the understanding that we'll come back later and look at how that impacts our pricing structure. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. That kind of goes to what I was thinking as well. If we agree to proceed with the bond with the South Valley Water Reclamation Group and, and it comes back and we don't like the terms, how hard, how difficult is it going to be to change horses midstream, as far as that goes?
Well, to be honest with you, we're going to tell them what the terms are. So every agency can pick a different term if they want to and the way that structure goes. But it's just getting on board and doing that now. So their question is, the board's voted, we're going to move ahead and do this. West Jordan, are you with us or not as far as that? Now, as far as are we going to use some cash with that? And then with the size of the bond could go down. Do you want to adjust for that cash portion in your rate as you do, you know, the next fiscal year? That's a question that we didn't have to have answered right now. But being on board to get the paperwork started and get going on that, to be in with them in the 60 days, that's the question that we're asking tonight.
Okay, thank you. David?
Any utilization of cash at this point will have impact on other capital projects that are in the pipeline. So if, if you're asking the staff to move forward, why don't I suggest that that moving forward would be with all 11 million paid through a bond and then some portions of options, like second option and a third option differentiated with the expenditure of some amount of cash followed by a different amount of cash in the third option. I, I think options are something that helps come to unity on ultimately what the decision is. So that's what I would instruct the finance department to start working on.
So for our clerk, if, if we want to just give them direction to move ahead with the bonding, do we just do a yea or nay?
Yeah, you don't need a roll call. I don't have a second. I have it down as Councilmember McConaughey's motion. And I have it to direct staff to proceed with the bond with the understanding the council would discuss how they would pay for the bond and research how quickly the bond could be paid down using the fund balance in the sewer fund? Is that what it is? Sewer fund? Is that kind of in a nutshell?
Chris, you want to?
Is, was that a motion or were you just kind of...
Well, he's got, he wants to address that.
It, it wasn't a motion, it was direction to staff. So with that, we can just ask if there's anyone in opposition. If no one's in opposition, then staff has that direction. We don't necessarily have to vote. If you want to vote, so there's something on the record in the minutes that shows up as a vote, then I can make a motion.
I think we can just, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. So that's the direction. Okay. Business item 9E, presentation regarding change of form of government transition process. David Brickie.
Mayor, if I may, did you intentionally skip item 7A?
No, we did it.
You did it?
7A was when you went and discussed... Asked all the three consent items that were pulled.
Yes, we did that. Okay.
So this is just a nice new formalized place in the agenda?
Yeah, so we don't forget to discuss them.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. When we met on January 26, we indicated to you that we'd be moving forward with a process to move ultimately in two years to the new form of government that the public has chosen to move the City of West Jordan in, into. This process has one, has been one that we've been contemplating. Um, this process has one, has been one that we've been contemplating. We've been considering. And frankly, given the authority that the city manager has, I could virtually start making changes for the next two years. And of course, the sole purpose of coming before you is to have it funded. I don't like that concept. I think it makes sense to roll it out in a process that both you see, the public can comment on. And one of the reasons it took me a little while to get this released just yesterday was even amongst the lawyers, was the discussion about, is this confidential? Is it something that is about my character and fitness? It could be argued that, but I chose to say, no, we're going to release this. And if you want to criticize me, we can do it later in the closed session. But if you want to comment about what we're trying to do, this is the place, this is the time. Let us know what you think about these ideas as we roll them out. So, on the second slide, we're looking at what our current form of government requires under the council manager form. The council hires the city manager as the CEO, and all responsibilities fall through that position, with the exception of those subcommittees and other committees that you assign and appoint. Under the new form of government, the council mayor form of government that will be starting on January 6th, 2020, the mayor will become the CEO. The mayor will have the ability to have, we've identified it as a city administrator and administrative services manager. Some cities call that city administrator, deputy mayor. This is, it's a title I chose at this point, but obviously recognize it can change by 2020. Those responsible parties on the left side of that form of government, the executive branch, will be in charge of all city employees. On the right side, the city council chair and six other elected council members will once again have only the limitation of being a legislative branch and working with those planning commission and other advisory committees that they appoint. So, I've asked Duncan, who has gone through, I've been through a change of government in Summit County one time, it took two years. And you want to start early. Duncan's been through three. So, I thought it was important to have him explain, once again, the comparison between the two forms of government. So, it's clearly delineating those responsibilities that the manager currently has with what the mayor ultimately will have.
So, really, the, the main points of difference are the first five bullet points.
Can we interrupt for just a moment? We have some questions already from council members. So, Councilmember McConaughey, you're up first.
Beautiful. So, first question ties between this one, yes, between both of these slides. So, now, go forward one. So, here it shows planning commission and other advisory committees all fall under the city council. Does that mean that, under the new form of government, the mayor would not have the ability to appoint anybody to the planning commission or any of those other bodies? Nor would they have the ability to veto? The reason I'm asking is because if you go forward one more slide, it shows that in the council mayor form of government, um, the city council, very bottom right bullet, the city council may not make any administrative land use decisions. So, this, the planning commission, it sounds like that would be our only voice in the land use conversation? Am I understanding that appropriately?
This could be a whole separate discussion just on land use. But to put it simply, there are a lot of changes in state law over the last couple of legislative sessions beyond the purview of change of government, just telling cities to keep administrative and legislative and quasi judicial functions separate. And for the most part, all of the land use decisions that you make as a council are legislative. There are a few that arguably might be administrative. So, the issue is not so much how would what you respond to directly change? That wouldn't change much. It is the focus on the planning commission. The planning commission, right now, exercises quasi judicial functions in forwarding map amendments and text amendments and weighing in on development agreements and development plans and then forwards those recommendations to you. That becomes a legislative decision to you. That won't change. What we will have to look at through this process, however, are those administrative decisions that the planning commission makes along the lines of conditional use permits, site plans, um, and subdivision plots, those kinds of things, which they'll, uh, some body will have to make those decisions. But it probably, in the, this form of government shouldn't be that same body because we want to spread out, split out those decisions. That may end up being a body within the executive branch. That's probably the only difference as far as the, the way the decisions are currently being recommended.
We, we can have a separate, more prolonged conversation a little bit later. That's what jumped out to me there, and that seemed significant. So, we can, we can talk more later in the interest of time.
And a lot of the council members don't have the benefit of having a previous meeting in which Councilmember McConaughey participated in the discussion with Dave Thomas from Summit County. This, that one issue probably consumed three or four months of a discussion because Summit County Council realized what they had lost. And there was some negotiation that went back and forth between the county manager and the county council. So, that's a reality that we recognize as lawyers. Um, at some point, there's going to have to be some give and take. And so, the idea is to show this right to you right now. And during this next year, as Duncan's rewriting the entire code, that will be an ongoing approach that will keep coming back and sharing with you.
Uh, Councilmember Whitelock has a question.
I just, and maybe I should know this, but I don't. So, seven-member council, is that, is that state code that we have to have that? Why have we chose seven?
Go ahead. So, there, there were two options that could have been chosen. The state law allows either a five-member council or a seven-member council. But since this particular change of government was initiated by the council itself by resolution, that was the choice that the council made.
The council made.
And then, once it was approved by the voters, then that was locked in at that point. But yeah, those initially would have been the two options. That was just the one chosen by the council when they approved the resolution.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, if I, uh, maybe I'm finishing this slide next. So, the, as I was mentioning there, there's five, the first five bullet points really are the, the main items to look at. Whoops. There's the pointer. If I can get it back. There we go. So, so the first one is that, under your current form of government, the mayor is part of the council. He's one of the seven members. The new form of government, we're separating the branches. As it mentions here, there's two completely separate branches. So, the mayor, uh, is the head of the executive branch, and there's still seven additional council members. So, we're effectively going from seven elected officials to eight. So, uh, this is one plus seven, eight. The second bullet point being that, instead of the city council as a whole appointing, uh, the city manager, uh, it's the mayor who appoints a city administrator to assist him with the consent of the council. But it is, in fact, just one person making that appointment instead of a group decision. Uh, and then the next one is that probably the third and fifth bullet points go together, which is basically who manages the employees and is in charge of the executive branch. And that goes from being the city manager to the mayor. And like I say, effectively, what we have right now is two, what I would call partially separated branches, and we're moving towards two completely separate branches.
And as indicated, just like the previous question, the terms of office will be, as set out above, or in the, excuse me, in the slide, the current mayor will be serving for two years. So, at the end of the two-year term that Mayor Wrighton's serving, he'll have to run again if he wants to be the mayor in this new form of government. But there will be that remaining two term, two years of his prior term that he was previously elected to. The two holdovers will be the two at-large members. They will have to make a decision in March of 2019 as to whether or not they intend to vacate that seat or hold over. Um, we've indicated at the time, this was considered by the voters that both positions that are being currently filled would be held over. But there is nothing to say that they could, couldn't change their mind. The one black dot you'll see in the middle, that is one new additional at-large member that will be elected in 2020. The district positions, each will not be serving for an initial four-year term, but an initial two-year term, and then have to run again at the end of 2023 for a four-year term. Our current council manager form of government.
We have a question, Councilmember Blam.
Go ahead, the previous slide.
Previous slide?
Yeah. So, my question is, I know that we voted on changing the form of government. Are we stuck with this form right here as far as the way the districts are set up for the next six years?
You are. The resolution identified that to the voters as to what they would be voting for and approving.
And there's no way to change it? I guess my concern is more for the district, one, two, three, and four, where we're having elections for the next six years in only two-year terms. Is there any way possible legally to change that if we wanted to?
We'll look into that, but at the present time, my, my quick answer is no. Um, we can consult with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, who's the chief election officer, and see if anybody in the state of Utah has challenged. But my initial reaction is 100, whatever the number of voters voted to approve it in this form, it would take probably a judicial order, setting it aside. Yeah, go ahead.
So, part of the question I think that you're posing is, what is the methodology? Why do we have it? And then, you know, secondly, I think you're asking, can you change it? But, but really, when something doesn't make sense, it's either follow the money or follow the law. And in this instance, it's follow the law or laws. Um, one of the laws at issue is that we have no ability to change. It's just on the books. Is that when you change a form of government and the position substantially changes and you go from a largely ceremonial mayor position to a strong executive mayor position? That's a different position, and you have to elect, uh, the, the new position separately. So, we have no ability to change the first line. There's a second law that's, that also we cannot change unless somebody changes it in the legislature, is that if someone is elected, uh, before the change of government, they have the ability, as Mr. Bricky described, uh, to flow through into the new form of government if their position is the same. And where it's at-large to at-large, that's the same position. So, we can't change the second and third lines. Nor can we change the fourth line because, um, and we have, we're going from seven elected officials to eight, and that person has to start at that point. So, the only question becomes is, where your tradition has been to elect all the at-large positions at one election and then all the district positions at the other election? And state law says you have to stagger an equal number of positions. So, if there's eight elected officials, that's four and four. And it does make sense to continue your precedent of electing all districts together and all at-larges together, especially where you have potential cost savings in elections. The question becomes, what's the easiest mechanism in which to put all of the at-larges together and how to put all of the, the districts together? And clearly, if these two are fixed, the easiest thing to do is get these two to match, um, so that they're all ending their terms at the same time so they can all four be elected at once. And then, if we're going to elect all these at this time, it makes sense to elect all these at this time so that they do begin staggering every two year, every two years you're electing one group or the other. Um, that was kind of the method of the madness for this approach. There's clearly maybe some other potential ways it could have been done. Uh, this seemed to be the most expeditious method that the council at the time came up with. Um, yeah, that's kind of where we're at, so.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as we look at this chart, it shows everybody ending their positions in 2023. Is that correct?
No, no. So, so the reason for, I mean, we could have extended this chart forever. I was trying to simplify it. The little, uh, keep in mind that the two-year terms are just the ones that have this weird shading. Everything else that's white are four-year terms. The arrow means, hey, there's some of this term that's, that's off the chart. And here, these are, these arrows are saying, hey, there's really more to this term that's off the chart over here. So, these really extend out to here. And then, they would be reelected there. So, the at-larges are all elected here, then all the districts are elected here, then all the at-larges are here, then all the districts are here. Starting at this point, you're starting to stagger as groups.
Okay. So, now, my next question is, I, I can see what you're doing. So, you're making the four districts two-year terms in order to give them offsetted from the at-large position.
To start to stagger.
However, the at-large positions then will be staggered from the mayor position.
Right.
Would it be better to make those two at-large positions two-year positions if they chose to stay in there, but make them two years between the 22 and 23 and make all the district positions all four-year positions? So, all the at-larges are in the same cycle with the mayor?
Isn't that what it's saying?
No, it's not. Because the at-larges are changing in 2022, but the mayor doesn't.
But they're only running for two years.
No.
Yeah, these two are just two-year terms. So, that all these positions will end, all these at-large position terms will end here and all be elected simultaneously.
That's right, but they're not in sync with the mayor position?
Yes, they will.
They will be at this point.
Oh, they will be.
They will be.
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, uh, I appreciate you allowing me to, coming in a little late, uh, doing some Cub Scout stuff with my family. So, I do appreciate that. And I'm, I ran two years ago. I ran this year. I'll run in two years. I'm very, I have to be okay with, with two-year terms. It's, it seems to be the nature of District Four right now. Um, my, my question is related to this. And I, I know the county did not change their form of government, and I don't know exactly when they made this change. However, um, at some point, when, uh, County Recorder Gary Ott was in office, and this came out during all of his proceedings, at some point, the county council did not want to have all the county elected seats, not the county, not the county council, but the, the other county electors, the sheriff, the recorder, the assessor. They wanted them to have staggered terms because they were all on the same cycle. And how they chose that, to my recollection, is if you were in, in one party, your seats ended up being six years. So, in the case of Mr. Ott, um, he ran in 2014, and he was up for election in 2020, had he, had he remained in office. And if you were the other party, you remained in your four-year seat. So, I, I'm kind of going with what, uh, what Councilmember Lamb was saying is, and, and again, we're changing the form of government. They didn't. So, there might be different, different code that applies into that. Um, I do, I, I did vote to support the change in form of government. I still have that. I support the change. Um, and I'm just trying to see if there's a better way to not have six seats up for election in six of eight.
We can certainly inquire. I don't, I'm not optimistic. We did the same thing in Summit County when I changed, when we changed our form of government. The auditor, the treasurer, uh, were given six-year terms of office initially, so that once they were elected. But the sheriff, county attorney, the clerk, they all stated four.
Right.
And so, once you set that and the voters then make a determination, that's acceptable to us, we're going to have a very high burden to go before a court and say, why are we changing it?
No, I don't.
It's not impossible to get the right draw. Um, we might be successful. So, we'll, we'll have to explore that. Um, and I guess the exploration will be, is it feasible? And if it is feasible, what would it look like? So, I mean, we'll start with the first discussion point, probably visiting with Lieutenant Governor's Office to find out, has there ever been a municipality who hadn't a resolution and approved by voters and then tried to change later the structure of it? We, we can be the first. It will be expensive.
No, I, I don't know that that's, that's where I want to go. But it might, by the same token, it also might be, oh, yeah, here's this section of code. It's permitted if the legislative body chooses it. I mean, that's, that's, that's the other side. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for a little bit of clarification, I, I agree with much of what has been said. Having six offices up for election in 2021 is going to be fun. Um, for all involved, whether, no, 2021, we will elect both at-large council members in all four district seats. After the two-year terms, the, after the two-year terms for the districts, that's 2021. This is 2018. Yeah, we do it twice. We do six twice. If the new form mayor term initially was just two years and the new form at-large council and the new form at-large council member was initially two years, or six, we wouldn't have to have that many elections at once, twice. Um, so I think what, what everybody's saying up here is, we don't want to go to court over this, that would just be silly. But if there is a way that we could change this part, not change the form of government that was approved by the voters, because that's water under the bridge, ship has sailed. But if we can change the implementation of this by just tweaking a couple of little things, can we do that? And that's, I think, the question. It's not, nobody here wants to go to court over this, I think that's just silly. We'd rather have the six elections.
We'll find out what our options are.
We'll find out what our options are.
And we'll probably share that by way of a memo.
That would be great.
All right.
Councilmember Lamb?
So I guess my question would be, and Zach, maybe you can pipe in on this. So for the new mayor term, if it were to go to the two years, is that legal? I mean, the, the vote was to change the mayor, and I'm not sure if we can go to a four, a two-year mayor term.
We're in one.
Okay. True. Okay, just a thought.
So our current form of government has a February 2018. The mayor and city council have a city manager and has currently a deputy city manager on the books. That position is vacant. The assistance to the city manager is also vacant. The senior executive assistant on the far left is filled. For whatever reason, we have an executive assistant position that has been funded for the last two years, but not utilized. It's not been, uh, there's been, there hasn't been a hired person in that position. What I'm going to suggest to you tonight is I'm proposing a change to the council manager form of government, and I'd like to see it implemented as early as April 2018. I'd like to have underneath the city manager, an administrative service manager and a community service manager. And I'll show how those two positions, uh, interrelate in a later sign slide. But the purpose of having this form implemented fairly quickly is so that in 2020, when the mayor becomes your CEO and the city administrator becomes the effective person that works for the mayor, and the administrative service manager stay in line, there will be three executive members in the new form of government, as there is now in this form of government. We're not, uh, we've heard a lot of comments about this form of government is expensive, it's gonna be costly. I don't want that to be the case. We want to design this so that when the transition happens in 2020, there'll be a couple individuals who will have to be concerned about their employment. But ultimately, the departments and the city roll forward. They just keep moving forward. The leadership directions will obviously change in the form of the mayor, from the city manager to the mayor. But the legislative branch stays the same, and all of the department heads, if they're doing their job, just keep moving forward. So what you see is what I'm proposing is the city manager has that primary responsibility to the largest entity of individuals that have contact with the public, uh, the police, the fire, and the justice court. The administrative service manager is responsible for operations, development services, finance, and community preservation. Community preservation is a new department, and we've modeled it after West Valley City. West Valley City's had very good success in what they call their community preservation. That is code enforcement. That's, uh, making sure that, um, the ALJ system is looking for compliance, not punishment. We're looking for fences that are cleaned up, we're looking for dogs not running at large. That is a department that has immediate contact with the public. Um, I want that department to have one individual that they can go to and seek advice from and get it quickly. On the far right, the community service manager is that individual who really has probably worked in the area of rolling up his sleeves and getting things done. He or she will have parks and public works. They have roads, they have, uh, individuals that are going to be expected working in the community daily. Uh, the numbers to break down roughly is about 120 on the right side and about 85 on the left side. The phasing of this was something we discussed back on the 26th. You saw the, the way Duncan had described it as phase A, phase B, phase C. What we realized as we moved forward, we had a lot of retirements, we had some people moving around quickly. We, we weren't gonna be able to do this completely without perhaps implementing some of these positions earlier than later. So as you can see, the positions that are currently now listed are ones that, for the most part, we have agreed definitions. We need to probably, uh, go through a hiring process that allows you for some input. But they are the two city attorneys that you met previously. We have now hired a project manager. The positions that remain unfulfilled at this point are economic development director, a human resource risk director, a building official, an executive assistant in the city manager's office, and the city attorney. Those are all listed right now, and our first, uh, opportunity to start reviewing applications is this coming, uh, Friday. Or tomorrow. Thursday? The next step is where I do want to sort of get some buy-in from you folks. Um, those certain job descriptions and key responsibilities tie back to that, that flow chart. Um, people here who've been a while, who've been in the city for a while, have seen the previous flow chart. It's, there's boxes in all kinds of different directions. I wanted to create a clear line of responsibility. So when these folks know where they need to go for a question to be answered, it's straight up the line to one individual. And if that individual can't answer the question, they head to the city manager's office. I want to shorten the time for people to try to seek responsible, for questions to get from the city manager. Yesterday, for example, uh, I, we were running, it seemed like I, like a chicken with my head cut off. And a part of it is, the frank fact of the matter is, we just are short staff right now, and a lot of decisions have to be made. And I, I'm willing to make them, but I'd like to find somebody in the administrative service manager, community service manager, that we can trust, so that in 2020, this job disappears, and the mayor takes over, and hopefully those two lines and columns just keep marching forward. Um, the one additional change that I mentioned earlier was the, the community preservation department. That was modeled after the West Valley City, uh, model or department they have. So that's a code enforcement division that you'll see has, um, an ALJ aspect that, just recently, this storm that hit us, uh, the snowstorm that hit us, we've had a lot of comments on Facebook about ticketing. Um, ticketing is a topic that the legislature is even weighing into. And I dare say that probably within a decade, we're gonna see some significant changes to the entire justice system. And ticketing is one of them. Currently, tickets are seen as a criminal act. I think the day's realistically coming, when all communities are advised, we're looking for compliance, not punishment. I have a council member.
Uh, Councilmember Cunningham, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go back one slide real quick? I know we went through this one really, really fast. I just wanted to call out, go forward one.
That one?
This one, yes. Um, that additional real estate manager type position, your prior slides had like A1, B1, A2, B2. This one really doesn't fit in there. I know I brought this one up before, but based on some of the needs that we've seen, I would love to see this one accomplished sooner rather than later. The latest I would like to see it seen is in the 2018, 2019 budget. But if we could do something sooner than that, given some of the needs that we've seen, that's, I, I just speak for myself there, but.
Well, I think this is, you're wanting to accomplish as much as you possibly can by April, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I think that's where this would fall.
Okay, so if you're looking for, uh, feedback on this one, that, that top one definitely is among my highest priorities.
Thank you. So this community preservation department is really one in which, uh, as I've mentioned, the ALJ is gonna be looking for compliance and making our city look, uh, in a uniform style. And we're not gonna be doing it by forcing people to come to court, be looking at criminal prosecution. We're gonna be looking at a process, it's far gentler, but it is going to be something that, um, frankly, this city's leading out on. Uh, currently, Brock Hudson, um, is already lecturing around the valley. Become, coming May 2018, um, certain citations are not going to be allowed to be issued by law enforcement officers. Uh, animal control is one of them. We've already started addressing it because frankly, we were in front of that, knew it was coming. We started making those changes early, and, uh, that word got out, and Brock's already giving, um, expert explanations of why we're doing it to other cities. We're just gonna, again, perfect this in a way that when you talk about what this city looks like, that's where the CDBG grants will become into play, will be repairing and returning the city to a pristine level in those communities or those neighborhoods that need that help. And that grant funding will, will be available through Brock's people walking around, seeing the issues that need to be addressed. The same is with licensing. I think we've all, uh, heard and seen, legislature is sending messages all the time about licensing. And we need to do as a city, a better job at helping our community be licensed as required by the state of Utah. So if we put everybody under the one department, I think we get a uniformity and a response time that's quicker, that's more responsive and more, um, responsive to the citizens. Is there anything you want to add?
Mayor?
Councilmember Burton? Thank you, Mayor. So I might understand that, let's say, right now, if there's a car parked illegally on the street, the police department issued that ticket. So are you saying with this change, the code enforcement will issue that ticket for car parked on the street instead of police? Or how is that?
So on some of these issues, we're working hand in hand, uh, or this department would work hand in hand with the police department. The police department would be able to issue those citations as well as this department. So, uh, uh, even though this becomes the spearhead for the types of activities that Mr. Bricky described, it still does involve coordinating some of those functions with other departments, especially in animal control.
So would non-police officers be able to write tickets?
Once we jump through all the write loops, yes. There are, there's some things that have to happen to make that possible, but.
Didn't we used to be in that position at one time in the city?
So what's that?
Didn't we used to do that at one time in the city?
I'm not sure about the.
At one time with the code enforcement? Yeah, code enforcement, we used to be able to, and we separated that, and now we're putting them back together?
Those were not moving violation tickets, though, correct? Those were just like parking tickets or dog, or I think chief.
The chief can better answer this issue.
Yes. Chief?
The current law that we're under right now, um, does allow for me, as the police chief, to assign certain civilian people to write criminal citations like parking tickets, parking dog tickets, all those kinds of tickets that are there. What is, um, happening, or will happen very shortly, um, is that, because the bill to amend it has failed so far, but current, what will happen is that in order to issue a criminal citation, you have to be a law enforcement officer. We could stay at that same realm, but I would have to put all of those civilian employees through at least the, um, special functions officer academy to do that. I, I think it makes more sense to put some of those laws under an administrative function. Uh, and to, I would still put some of the animal control officers, uh, through that so that they can deal with the, um, animal abuse issues and those kinds of things, so they can still act and do those kinds of things that they need to. But for parking, for the parking dog, those nuisance kind of violations, I think this administrative law makes perfect sense, if that helps clarify things.
Thank you. So I've asked, I've asked Duncan, this now gets an explanation of that phasing A and phasing B. Phase C, of course, was then the total rewrite of city code. Um, you can see phasing C, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and I've asked Duncan to sort of explain how he's chosen and why we think it makes sense to go through the process the way we've identified.
So as mentioned, this is the, uh, most time-consuming part of the process when we get to it, and that's why I've broken it up into four different groups. But what we're talking about is going all the way through the whole code, and at a minimum, at least modifying those particular items in order to be compliant with the new form of government. And the other reason for breaking into those parts is that, uh, as we complete a title or so at a time, we'll be coming back to the council. Uh, there'll be certain policy decisions that need to be made, there'll be different options, and you'll have an opportunity to consider which one you would like, because of course, changes in the ordinance are purely a legislative function, at least at the final, it's a decision that you have to complete at your level. Uh, the reason for starting with titles one and two is those are the ones dealing with, uh, the structure of the departments and, and committees and so forth, uh, which, uh, the idea is that once those are established, that would handle and match what currently is being rolled out, that Mr. Bricky described, plus then moving forward into the new form of government with those just a couple of minor changes of positions at the top in mind, could just, uh, move forward with minimal changes at the two-year from now point. But this would be a matter of actually solidifying those at the city, uh, in the city code with titles one and two. Then as we move forward with the, the second grouping of titles, those are essentially land use titles. It's zoning, it's subdivisions, it's the permitting processes. As I indicated, we're, we're far ahead of most cities in that we've largely broken out the legislative and administrative processes, especially at the council level. Uh, I don't see as much time needed in this area, other than we will have to deal with that issue of the planning commission exercising both quasi-judicial authority and administrative authority. There might, uh, be some options there that you could consider in that realm. Um, and then the third grouping of, uh, ordinance changes are those titles in the code dealing with finance and life, uh, health and public safety, those kinds of things. And then lastly, uh, that last grouping is dealing with public works, utilities, buildings, and, uh, building codes and that kind of thing. Uh, you'll notice the footnote on the bottom, uh, which indicates, and we talked about this in your annual strategic, uh, planning session, that the timing of being, trying to complete this whole process, and I think it's realistic, uh, by the end of January, uh, 2019. The reason for that goal is, if, if that can be completed, and I, and I think we can, uh, is that that'll be ahead of your next budget process, that's a year from now. Uh, because that budget process will be very critical in that half of that upcoming budget year will finish out this current form of government, and the second half of that budget year will be the new form of government. And you'll need to have, you'll, you'll need to be able to see with clarity, what are those changes? How do they need to be funded? And not so much, uh, changes in funding as they're just different departments maybe, or, or, uh, and that kind of thing. So, um, as we're realigning departments, taking one division from another. So that's the, kind of the, the thought pattern, that is, if this process is done by that time, then you're able to move forward with that next budget process.
The reasons for these changes are principally, we have, we have to comply with the law. Um, that's just a requirement. So the voters have made a decision, it's, um, it's expected that we're gonna move forward. When the legislature allowed you as a community to change your form of government, they put a timeline that the form of government would be completed within six months of the election. I, I want that done in April of 2018. I want to prove to this community that the way we design this government as we roll into 2020 is functioning properly, that it's moving forward, we're getting businesses here, we're productive. It does mean I'm going to eliminate my job, if I do it well. Um, it's going to create more efficiency, it's gonna minimize stress and, um, frustration in 2020. The change of government is going, is inevitable. But with this form of government, the way we've set forth, those previous studies, one was done in 2005, and there was huge numbers, I realize that numbers that were proposed then were, uh, done in a way to sort of, you know, maybe fear, drive fear into people, but the numbers were as high as 800,000 to 1.5 million. The way we're sitting this out will be an increase of maybe $54,000 to $100,000. And when the new people take office, we will be paying for one additional at-large member for their participation as a, as an elected official. for their participation as, as an elected official. But we're considering, for example, um, in some of the forms of slides that, and I've heard this from other council members, the mayor will have his assistance and the council will have their manager. We're already setting it in place to recognize that the city council may have the need for somebody to work for them. I want them to work for the city, but to work for the city council. We're not gonna be creating a position and you'll have to be funding it in 2019 to be filled in 2020, we're gonna do it in 2018. So there'll be this seamless transition into this new form of government. So the last slide, if I could jump all the way forward, um, was again, to maintain and improve the image of the city. You can slide down, but that last one fast. Thanks. We're gonna end up with better code enforcement, we'll be utilizing our police officers. If you have code enforcement officers dealing with code problems, then law enforcement can deal with the more tragic, more serious may it matters of domestic violence, assaults, crimes of a magnitude that requires an officer to respond with a gun. Our ALJ will be busy and will hopefully be bringing in money and helping to solidify the image that we need to correct if we need to, uh, through that process. We'll have better parking enforcement and a better process for handling animal control issues. So the last slide is, if you have questions, I'm ready to, although we've been hitting the lot, we're expecting more.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to reiterate the importance of communication. I think you've done a great job tonight communicating to us and those are in the crowd to see what's happening, but do we have a plan in place over the next few months? You know, whether it's through Kim Wells, our communications director, or making a page on our website that just says, here's what's happening, here's the steps we're taking? Is there any kind of communication directive that we have so we can get this information out? I don't think we need to, you know, send out a Facebook post every 10 minutes to explain how this is doing, but at least let those who want to know, understand the changes we're making so that they don't have to be scared of the changes that are coming up.
We can do that. In fact, along with that communication, it came up again today, um, when would you like to discuss, uh, what goes on in here as form, as a form of streaming?
As a form of what?
Should we, should we, should we put that on the agenda for next, uh, March 14th?
Yes. Okay, March 14th, be on the agenda.
I, I feel like, you know, if I've got the audience, I might as well, you're captured, I have all seven of you here, um, is that something you wanna be discussing March 14th? Because I think that communication is something that certainly we can't, it's static if we provide it the day after, it's whatever it is. If it's right now, this evening, um, I, I just think it would be helpful if we're addressing it sooner than later.
Put it on for March 14th.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one thing that has come up a lot and came up during the discussions during the campaign last year as far as whether we should change the form of government or not, was that the council will need an attorney, not just a manager, but an attorney. Now granted, right now, we get them all and rolled into one, it's kinda nice, but possibly two separate positions.
And I can address, uh, there are three cities.
Your thoughts on that, yeah?
We anticipated this issue. Uh, we've seen three cities that, that council has their own attorney and it doesn't function well. Because if you have attorneys fighting internally, and, and that's after all, if you have a separate attorney who answers to you folks as a council, there's no reason they have to file the direction of the city attorney. None.
Right.
So, um, that is something we're aware of, uh, I will discourage it because I do think it sets up competing interests between the two attorneys.
Well, that's what attorneys do.
Well, the reason, unless there's a divorce, which is kinda what we're doing here, but, no, the reason I, and the reason I bring it up, the reason why I think it's not necessarily a bad idea, is, um, something that occurred in a discussion that I had over the last couple of weeks when I've been talking to our legislatures, legislators in the legislature. And that was, well, you know, we heard that, well, if you don't support initiative X, Y, or Z, then a, a certain executive in a strong mayor form of government may hold your projects hostage. And I thought, well, how can a certain executive do that when there's a council involved? And they said, well, he controls the staff that brings things to the council. And if there's not a, you know, a, a, a staff working for the council bringing things up. So I'm just thinking, a council attorney to also sign off on, we agree that the, that this is legalized reform, because there can be a division between a mayor and a council. There, there can be a head-to-head and I wanna know that I can talk to an attorney who can say, yes, you can do this, when this attorney's saying, no, you can't do that.
And I think you can do it with, as an attorney, a city attorney who you trust. I think you have to have an attorney that you principally trust and expect him to hire ethical lawyers who will say to one another, I, I can't, I'm going to be representing this entity even though we work in the same office. We're gonna create a wall that separates our discussion points.
We may have a separate office.
Yes. But I, 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 I know what you're talking about, the idea of having your own attorney and preventing that previous scenario from playing out, doesn't stop it. It still gets played out. You can have the attorneys, we still have, uh, two branches of government in this city and we have one attorney and we, I think, uh, we've been able to prove to you that when Mr. Dodd's representing you, you can also ask Mr. Duncan to get a straight answer if you need to.
True, but in, in, this, this situation is different because Mr. Dodd's boss reports to us. And that won't be the case, Mr. Dodd's boss will report to the people, assuming that this same people are in place.
There's two other principles that may, you may wanna consider and may assist you in your analysis. One principle is that currently, right now, as the city attorney's office, we're faced with representing and working with the city manager as well as the council. So we're, we're already working with a group of seven and a group of one, and that really won't change much with the change of form of government, because there'll still be a group of seven and a group of one, it's just that the one is a mayor, elected mayor instead of an appointed city manager. The second of two principles you may wanna consider is that we have five, uh, civil attorneys in the city attorney's office right now that focus on civil rather than prosecution. And those five are already divided up in their responsibilities as to which departments they primarily work with, and we kinda treat those departments like clients. And so some of us might, Joel Linares may represent primarily public works and parks, and I may work primarily with development and planning commission and some of those things. But, and, but we still all recognize that we're, we're representing the best interest of the whole city. So we're already used to, at least this current office, used to understanding that we're all working for the same team, but we still have kinda separate clients, if you will. There's no difference than council versus mayor or city manager, as it is parks and public works versus planning commission and development. Just a thought.
Right, but it, and just, again, the, the head-to-head comparison doesn't work when the executive doesn't, doesn't, uh, report to the council. So we can direct the executive to direct the attorney's office to do X, Y, or Z, regardless of which department they represent. In the mayor, in the strong mayor case, we can't do that. That strong mayor doesn't report to us. So if we don't like the way legal is representing the council, we have no recourse. Now ideally, that won't happen. Ideally, we will have ethical attorneys who will do a great job and, and things like that. But I think in the last few years, we've seen a less than ideal circumstance play out a few times, especially with attorney's office, coincidentally, where I, I wanna plan for the worst-case scenario, if that makes sense, um, at, at least to have the, the circles on the chart, so that if and when the worst-case scenario plays out, we don't have to recross the Ts and not the X.
And there are, there is an ordinance, a state ordinance that does set out a worst-case scenario. When a body finds that they're at odds with their own attorney, they can then turn to the attorney and say, we no longer agree with that council advice. We need you to issue an opinion that we're now at odds with one another and we need you hire outside counsel. So you can go to the process of hiring outside counsel, they come at the cost of 300, 400, maybe 500 dollars an hour, not the lower amounts of less than 100 that we, you pay staff here. But there is a process that's in place and, and I can tell you, we played it out one time in Summit County when I advised on taxing decision on the US ski team building. I said, you can't do it. They wanted to, they went about hiring outside counsel, that outside counsel advised the Summit County council on how to proceed. So there is a process, I've been through it, um, I'm comfortable, once you identify, we are not comfortable taking your advice, we need someone else.
Thank you for entertaining my, my, my points of view. I think it's, it's a discussion that doesn't have to play out right now. Down the line, even five years down the line, if the council decides it needs an attorney, the council can create the position and override the mayor if he wants to veto it and create the position and budget for it. So it doesn't necessarily have to play out right now, I'm just throwing some out, things out there where there may be more than one employee from the council that the council will need, so attorney being.
Yes.
An example.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So I guess I'll go with the attorney issued first, um, because I respectfully disagree. And the reason I do is because of what I experienced on the school board. We kind of all were the same team, but I can tell you that when those attorneys came in and they were working for the superintendent, what they advised us was much different than when we went ahead and retained our own attorney. I saw two different, two different responses and felt like we were getting better advice for what we were asking when it was our attorney, not the staff attorney, the staffs. It belonged to the different branch of government. When it was in our branch of government, it was different. And I am pretty frugal, but I'll tell you that that was very worthwhile expense. He was, I believe on retainer is how we did it, so he, he didn't have to be at every meeting, only when we wanted him. And there had to be, I don't, I think it was two or more of us had to agree that someone could call them, call, it was a him, call him before a, a board member could call. So, so the cost, yes, there was a cost, but it wasn't a full-time cost. And for me, I'm very much in favor of the council having their own legal for those reasons.
Yeah, and ultimately, unlike these, most of the other items that Mr. Bricky has, has put forth tonight, that's ultimately gonna be your decision and, and you can choose whatever, we've just thrown out some ideas. The, the main concept that I think Mr. Bricky's trying to accomplish with this change of form of government process is to minimize the amount of expense. And so using that frame of mind, that's why a separate, one of the reasons why a separate attorney is not mentioned, because whether that separate attorney is on retainer or rolled in some other way, then obviously those costs could go up, doesn't mean it's substantial. But the frame of mind that, that Mr. Bricky's mainly focused on is to keep the expenses the lowest possible, doesn't preclude you from exercising whatever options you'd like to. One of the other options you may wanna consider is where there is, there are those two, uh, positions that would be at no extra cost that were already described tonight. One of them was the council manager, which would just be one of the positions that we currently have that could just slide over to the legislative branch, the other is an executive assistant. You could build that into those two employees, you could, for instance, when you hire that council manager, maybe make that be a, a council manager and attorney slash attorney, maybe that council manager is also an attorney and has the background. So at least you've got some ongoing legal advice and then, you know, maybe you put something outside retainer. So the, the, tonight's discussion was mainly just what is the main structure and then anything beyond that that you would like to have is, would be completely up to you as far as within the future legislative branch.
We have a obligation to follow through with what the client wants, this is what they wanna do. It doesn't really matter what my personal opinion is. My responsibility is to give you as many options and then implement whatever it is you decide as a majority to move forward with. We'll do that.
Great. And then Duncan, you gave me the perfect segue, cause my other question was, what are you envisioning this, this council manager? What, what is that person's responsibility? What are, what are they going to be doing?
Well, once the, there's that complete separation of the two branches, then the main responsibility of the council is the legislative branch is of course, to continue to pass all the ordinances and resolutions and make those policies. The other main area of responsibility is of course, the, the budget, those things remain the same. And then of course, you continue to supervise the planning commission and advisory boards. So whichever person you pick to fill that role would need to be able to assist you in those responsibilities, namely the, uh, the policy, uh, ordinance resolution-making area, the, uh, reviewing the, the budget and once it's handed off from the mayor to you, being able to review it and give you recommendations and options for your considerations so that you can make fully informed decisions. And then lastly, to, to supervise and make sure that those advisory commissions and committees are functioning and giving you the advice. So I would say somebody that has those skill sets is probably the type of person you'd want to fill that position.
So it would be like a legislative analyst as well?
Yeah.
Would be part of their role?
And that's why I say maybe you consider an attorney, because if you're talking about an expert that's helpful with ordinances and resolutions, that could be an attorney. Uh, if you're talking about budget process however, maybe it's somebody that has financial functions and, but then somebody who also understands how to bring the advice from advisory committees to you as a body. So, yeah, that's, that's at least at this point what I envisioned.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for the work you're doing on this. Thank you for starting it early. I like the direction where you're going and I appreciate all of that. And as far as the live streaming, the longer you wait on that, it's okay with me.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple notes I've, I've made is, uh, change is good. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just keep on with that. I'm hopeful that we as a council with the new form of government, um, can continue to work together as we are now. I understand the desire of having an attorney assist the council as needed, but I don't see that conflict, uh, in other cities that have this, this new form of government that we're going to. And I probably would, would see in the code that there's an option where the, the council has an ability to hire outside counsel as, as needed. I don't know that necessarily we need one in, in, on staff for the council, but I under, I understand what, what my colleagues are saying. And if, if I can just, um, mention, I'm very happy to see kind of what's, what's being proposed. I think this is something that the, the city needs, not from a, a staff standpoint, but more being able to deliver the services to our residents in a timely, professional, high customer service manner, um, being able to streamline some of our services, being able to, uh, put our resources where it will do the most good for our residents. And I don't know that we, we could have accomplished that without going through a, a, a change in form of government. I ran, uh, two years ago and even this past year on a better West Jordan, uh, things that we can do better, we can, we can just raise the bar, we have so much potential in this city with economic development, with the delivery of services, with businesses, with residents that are moving into the city and, and being able to address those timely, quickly, efficiently. And I just wanna say, I, I really appreciate the, the thought and work that's been put into this and I think our citizens will be better for this. And if I have to run every two years for the next decade, or however long the, the residents will allow me to serve as their representative in District 4, then that's what I'm willing to do, to see this benefit come to them as, as a, an improved, better delivery of service to our residents. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just quickly, wanted to chime in about the idea of having a full-time attorney for the council. I, I have no disposition to go down that route at this point. Having been through some rather tumultuous times on the council, we've seen that we haven't had too many problems when necessary, getting outside advice. That seemed to work really well. Um, I'm, I'm happy to go down that route at this point, so I would not be supportive of any approach that included a full-time attorney for the council out the chute. So, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, that was very informative. Thank you for that presentation, that was very informative. We'll move to item number 10 on our agenda, which is remarks. Are there any remarks from anyone tonight? Councilmember Jacob.
Can we figure out whose computer it is that controls the air conditioning and heat in here?
That'd be Justin Stoker.
He's over at facility. It just seems that, it just seems that we come in here and go, wow, it's hot, and everybody goes, yeah, somebody controls that, and nobody knows who. And so, I just, just thinking that it shouldn't be that difficult. Thanks.
Councilmember Whitelock.
A couple of things. I may or may not be having surgery on the 13th of, yeah, the 13th of March, because I'm supposed to have it, but I'm not convinced the lady got the documentation turned in soon enough, so we'll see. She thinks it will work. So if I do, I won't be here on the 14th. So, but I would like to bring back, and I was on the prevailing side of the enterprise fund, and at a meeting that I am at, I would like to have that brought back for further Also, I just have to throw this out, I think this form of government thing would be a perfect thing for a study session, and then not so many of these folks along here would have to sit here and enjoy the discussion. And then lastly, if I could get an electronic copy of this, Scott, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Any other remarks? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move to a closed session and adjourn from there. And the closed session will be for the discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, a strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of a water right or water shares. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I move to go into a closed session and adjourn from there for the discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, and strategy session to, and/or a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of water right or water shares.
Councilmember Lamb.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Mayor writing.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Lamb. Councilmember McConaughey. Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
The vote passes, seven in favor.